...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We have a lot of great topics tonight, but first up, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Winkelman, since we have some recognitions.
I need a roll call.
We need a roll call, sorry. You guys got me nervous.
(laughing).
Roll call, roll call.
Sandra Bradford.
Here.
Barry Altshuler.
Here.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Here.
Erin Chan Ding.
Here.
Katie Carum.
Steve Wang.
Here.
Diana Clopton.
Here.
Thank you. I even have it right there in my notes. Just read it.
That's okay.
(laughing). Dr. Winkelman, would you please?
Absolutely. Exciting night. We actually have two student groups from Prairie Campus that we're going to recognize tonight. And I know we have a full house, we have a lot of important topics to discuss tonight, and we've set up an overflow room so that we can kind of manage those in the room and not. I think it would be good if we just take a second and make sure any students that are part of either the boys or girls golf team, I'm hoping they're in this room and they didn't get displaced. So I just wanted to check on that. Okay, perfect. If we need to make room, I'd like to bring them in. So then with that, if everybody's here for the two groups that are being recognized, at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Gillette, our Assistant Principal at Prairie Campus, who's gonna start with the recognitions this evening.
Love it. Hardware.
Yeah.
Yes.
Big time hardware.
Ah. Swept.
I think so. If not, push the button.
Should be like.
There you go.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Yes, my name is Brad Gillette. I am Assistant Principal and Athletic Director at Prairie Campus. Before we begin tonight, I just wanna make sure I say thank you very much to the School Board, to Dr. Winkelman, and our Executive Council members for your unwavering support for extra critical opportunities for our students. Without your guys' support, we would not be here tonight, and we wouldn't be able to provide these amazing opportunities for students to succeed beyond the classroom. So thank you very much for that. For those that don't know, the IESA changed their state golf competition structure this year. In prior years, we had individual students compete as a part of our school team, but they only competed as individuals. And they would then have their rankings for, you know, leaderboards and such. This year, they changed and they added a team component. So for the very first time in IESA history, we also won the individual, or sorry, the team state championships for the girls' team and the boys, and we have an individual girls' state champion as well. So it was an amazing season for our golfers.[970.31][970.31](applause). Without further ado, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bentley, our golf coach, and he will say a few words about our individual student athletes.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Thank you, Dr. Winkelman. Thank you to the board for allowing us to recognize these outstanding golfers this evening. So I'll start with the girls. They played first the road to the championship. For them, starts at the sectional tournament at this age. And the way it worked this year, schools that qualified for golfers to the sectional tournament were entered into the team format. And then they took the lowest scoring team total. They add up all four scores together. The girls had a tough draw. They played at Countryside Golf Course in Mundeline on a day that was probably the coldest day of the summer. It rained for the first two hours. I think there were six scores under 100 that day, and Sophia was one of them. But they did a great job. They qualified to go downstate to Metamora, and so that day, they went down. They all played really well. And they ended up tying with a team from Frankfurt with a total score of 364. And they broke the tie with Cece's scorecard. And so she pulled through for us, and we ended up winning the state championship. So congratulations. The team consists of Jane Chun, Sophia Christie, Addison Yun, and Cece Herndon.[1061.49][1061.49](applause). And something a little extra special, so this wasn't Sophia's first time at the state tournament. She went last year as a seventh grader and finished solo third place. So we knew we had unfinished business. And she managed to get the job done this year with an amazing back nine. She went five under. Is that right?
Oh.
Went five under on the back nine. I think shot a 70 even. So, really good job. And then it was the boys' turn. So their sectional tournament happens in Rockford every year. This year, we had a solo eighth grader leading the way in Logan Lee, and then we had Tate Blumquist and Neem Yopatier, and then Riley Schumacher, who's our newest member as a sixth grader. So they went to Rockford, and they put up a score, team score, that was 318. And I might bet that that might be the record for a while, until next year if we break it. But they did a really great job. I knew they had an outstanding chance to win state this year. So we went down to Metamora, and little bit of nerves early on. The way they organized it, the boys were all partnered up in their threesomes with eighth graders who were probably bigger than me. And they were just hitting the ball a mile. And I told them multiple times, I said, "Just play your game. Don't worry about it. Don't worry about it." And they ended up winning, I think, by 13 strokes with a, I think it was 364.[1168.02][1168.02](applause). And Neem qualified as a sixth grader to go downstate last year, and so he was back again this year, and he finished in the top 10, I think, tie for seventh, I believe it was. So, great job by Neem.[1185.12][1185.12](applause).
Thank you, Coach Bentley. Students, anything that you would like to share? And I'd like to invite you to kind of stand up, and if there's things you want to share about the experience that you had down at state, or respond to any questions that our board may have. Anyone want to share anything?
Your swing, maybe?
Yeah, you got one. Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
I would recommend doing it, 'cause you get to miss quite a, you get to miss quite a few days of school, so.[1224.71][1224.71](laughing).
Bonus.
All right, okay.[1227.85][1227.85](applause).
Anyone else want to comment on your experience at state, or any of the season at all?
I have a question. What's your advice for aspiring golfers? Because I can't even make par mini golfing. So, huh? When kids, what would you advise kids and grownups who want to get better? What's worked for you?
Listen to your coach, maybe?
Practice, practice, practice.
Yeah.
Practice? Just keep going.
Just keep going, okay?
No matter what your scores are, does your practice eventually pay off?
I love that. Practice will eventually pay off.
When you have a bad shot, or just forget about it, and you have, keep it, like, you're keep, they're going in their mind, you're doing other shots, and that will just be your work.
Yep.
That's great advice.
So, don't dwell on a bad shot. Keep going. I'm doing that on purpose for the people in the back. I'm trying to make sure that everyone can hear what's going on. Anything else that you got, any of you would like to share? We're gonna do a picture in a moment. Any other questions?
Your teammates help each other, encouragement from each other helps a lot. I'm seeing some, a lot of, all the heads are nodding yes. That's excellent. Thank you for taking care of each other. All right, shall we do the photo?
Absolutely.
All right. Any parents want to make any comments while we come around?
Thank you, being these opportunities.
Yeah.
Thank you, parents, for your kids.
Yeah.
Can't go without the parents.
All right, should we do, Samantha, how do you want to do it?
Girls first.
Girls first, all right.
Boys, 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 boys.
Bring it in.
Girls.
Yeah, if you guys, that's, that's to take the boys out. Coaches, coach?
Yeah, they, they, we were on the ranch last year.
How do you all find it?
Here, did you all get a chance to get a picture of parents?
Parents, yeah?
Good job, girls.[1392.35][1392.35](applause). Job.
Okay.
Girls could just sit down, yeah?
There you go. One more, your favorite.
All right, good job, boys.
Trade places, let.
I hope so.
A lot of people leaving. Got one more room. Is this here?
First ever.
Janine?
It's okay.
What is the Student Council rep's name?
It's really nice. I'm usually really like 15 over par in golf, so I can't.
Right.
Like, five under, I'm so impressed. Oh, my gosh. We used to live by a golf course in Michigan, and it was like freezing, so we just shouldn't bring it to the ball.
All right, as folks are settling in here, Melissa, are you ready? We're gonna hear from our Barrington High School representative.
This is on?
It's always on. Just speak kind of directly into it.
Sure.
Got that right?
Hi, everyone. My name is Melissa Guo. I'm a senior at BHS, and I'm also the Student Board Liaison. I've been in the district since first grade, and I've had so many wonderful experiences, and I wanted to share it with you all. The staff here are amazing. Everyone is so welcoming and supportive, and the teachers are always free to help. The students, however, are the true heart of the school. From upperclassmen showing me the way around on my first day of school, to endless support in clubs and sports, I felt so much love from this community. Specifically, I wanted to shine a light on Student Council, which I joined my freshman year. It's taught me invaluable skills such as collaboration and communication, which are some of the personal success skills from the learner profile. The whole council communicates with each other and works together to help give a voice to our students, to improve our school, and to plan events. And one big project that we just finished with recently is homecoming. I wanted to thank all the members for their hard work. Two weeks ago, we had our Homecoming Week and Dance. The Spirit Week drew a lot of participation, and students enjoyed the dance as a culminating activity. This month, we have a couple of special events happening in our Fine Arts Department. The Fall Orchestis Dance Concert is next weekend, and orchestra and jazz band concerts are later in the month. Personally, I'm looking forward to the jazz band concert, and also, I'm going to support some of our sports, such as girls' volleyball, which is happening this week, and also, girls' basketball, which is later in the winter. And that is all I have for today. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Melissa. So next up is my report. Thank you so much. You're welcome to stay.
But we understand if you need to go.[1674.85][1674.85](laughing).
Thank you.
Bye, Melissa.
Thank you, Melissa. So honoring our IESA golf championships, champions, and hearing Melissa's wonderful experiences in the student celebrations, she mentioned are great examples of our Barrington 220 mission statement, empowering personal excellence in every learner. Another good example of our mission statement was a visit we had recently by Dr. Tony Sanders, the State Superintendent. He praised what he called "the flexibilities" that we incorporated into the students' school days to meet their individual needs. So you might have read more about that in the Chicago Tribune. As Melissa mentioned, homecoming was a great success. Thank you to the board members who were able to march in the parade, and then those that were able to watch the parade together. And we had almost all of our board members present at the ribbon cutting ceremony, along with community members, alumni, and staff. So it was great fun to celebrate the renovations at the, at the high school. We also held a ribbon cutting ceremony today at the ELC, another great time, seeing and being with our youngest learners, which always bring a smile to my face. But we've got one more coming up. We've got a ribbon cutting ceremony on August 16th, Monday, Monday, August 16th, at 3:30.
Our October.
What did I say?
August.
August? Oh, my gosh. I can't even read my own writing. October 16th, excuse me, at Lyons Elementary School, 3:30 PM. We have our Ed Red Annual Kickoff Lunch on Friday. So if you're able to go and you haven't said so, please let Janine know. Melissa already mentioned, there's an Orchestis Dance Concert revival on October 14th and 15th at Barrington High School. On October, on our next meeting, on October 17th, Board, please don't forget that we have our Trauma Informed Practices Training, and we should all be here at 4:45. And please let Janine Stark know if you cannot make it at that time. Another thing, Board. Another thing, Board and community members, the ISB Resolutions Committee Report has been published. We will have special comment, special public comment on those resolutions at our next meeting on October 17th. And then the Board will vote on them on the meeting on November 7th. We have tried to organize our social dinner, Board, so if you haven't gotten back to Janine. You have them all now. Do we have a date? I guess we'll be hearing about that maybe in our, in Craig's Weekly Report, maybe. So excellent. Thank you all for getting, getting your feedback in. And then last thing I wanted to mention is that there was a social media incident at Barrington High School in the past few weeks. And I just want to take a few moments to thank the students that reported it and take the time to thank the staff and our law enforcement partners for acting swiftly and ensuring safety for everyone at Barrington High School. And I'll take this opportunity to remind the student staff and community that if you see something, please say something. All right, so with that, we will move to public comment portion. We do have several people signed up. So we have, and I, and the Board, as maybe you've, maybe you know, met and had our self-reflection. So we have a new introduction to our public comment that I finally am getting to read through. I'll take any feedback on how this goes. We've come to a portion of our meeting set aside for public comment. The Board values your thoughts and opinions. We will ensure that all voices are respected and heard in accordance with the Board Equity Statement that states that we recognize, embrace and defend the identities, abilities and voices of our diverse school community. The Board has agreed to the rules set forth in our policy in which public commenters have agreed to as they signed up for public comment. Rules will be enforced as required. This Board meeting is one that occurs in public. It is not a public meeting. Public comment is not a conversation and does not necessarily reflect the views of the Board. If any comments require further attention, we will ask Dr. Winkelman to follow up and report back to the Board. All right, so with that, I would like to call Larry Stobauer, Stogbarrow, Stigbauer. Stigbauer, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. I, Larry Stigbauer, I'm here today on behalf of a group of concerned parents to present the case involving a custodian alleged in inappropriate conduct during the previous school year. During the initial school meeting concerning this in mid-August, attended by seven parents, our school principal presented her findings regarding the concerns we had raised in mid-July. She reported that the custodian relocated lost and found items to his office rather than the designated lost and found area. Subsequently, our children heard about this and were allowed to visit the office during lunchtime in small groups. It is essential to note that the principal consistently stated during the meeting that neither the custodian or any other adult was present in the room when the children visited. According to our children, the custodian was in the room without any adult supervision nearby. During the meeting, parents requested that the custodian be transferred to a different building. The principal explained that she lacked the authority to transfer personnel and expressed her comfort with the custodian's return to the building on the first day of school. Following extensive discussion, the principal finally agreed to escalate the matter to the district. On August 23rd, our children were interviewed, often in the presence of the parents. Their accounts remained consistent with their initial statements. One of which was that these incidents lasted minutes and occurred over several weeks, contrary to the later reports assertion that they lasted seconds and were limited to one week in May. The district interviewer confirmed that all the children's interviews corroborated the information provided and said that the custodian admitted now to being present in the room with the children. Parents commented that it seemed shocking that the custodian had now changed their story. We received the investigation report and decision on Friday, September 1st. We were shocked and disappointed by the contents of the report and the district's conclusions. Subsequently, some of us thought, sought to contact the superintendent to present inaccuracies of the report, but he never responded. Concerned parents within our group feared for their children's safety upon learning that the custodian would be present in the school the following school day. Regrettably, this decision was made without affording parents the mandated 10-day appeal period, compromising our children's safety. Given the discrepancies, we wrote an appeal weeks ago and have heard nothing. We remain uncertain as to when and why the narrative surrounding this case shifted and why the voices of our children appear to have been disregarded. It is important to note that we've had to tell our children to fear him and stay away while in a place where they should feel safe. Also, the custodian is still trying to converse with some of our children, which is making them feel uncomfortable and forcing them to have to get up and leave their area to another area. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Any questions or just a statement?
Nope, it's not a dialogue. Thank you, Larry. Next up is Elena Dollstream. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Elena Dollstream. I'm a junior at BHS and I'm very active in the fine arts. So back in May, the like architectural designers met with many of the fine art students to hear their, what they thought was important to include in the remodel that was being discussed soon. And so some of the music students stated that they wanted larger spaces overall, better soundproofing between rehearsal spaces, a music recording studio, a variety of practice rooms with better ventilation and air quality and speakers, and more ensemble spaces for five or more.
Hi, I'm Umi and I'm also a junior at BHS that's involved in the fine arts. Some of the recommendations that theater and dance students wanted was additional dance and collaborative rehearsal spaces, new dressing rooms, since orchestras and theater has its share, better lighting, sound for stage, handicapped accessibility, larger and more rehearsal spaces, and a better auditorium slash stage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up together too. Next up is Paul Cusmano. Hello.
Welcome. How are you? So yes, my name is Paul Cusmano and I'm an 88 grad. I also have two kids in the system now, a freshman and a junior. I'm also Chair of the Alumni Association and I work with the Fine Arts Boosters. So I speak for myself, but hopefully many people there as well. So here to ask the Board to think boldly when it comes to the presentation for the Fine Arts Potential Center. You know, I'm not here to tell you the need, the need you know, which is well documented. Some students just came up. You know that the staff have put together lots of things and you understand the need. You understand about holistic education, that half of all BHS students are using these facilities and that the facilities are not necessarily matching current teaching goals, let alone future teaching goals. You know this already. I'm saying it so everyone else will hear it, but I'm not here to convince you for that. I'm also not here to convince you that it's the time to do it because I think, I think you know that. It's the last piece of a current puzzle of a lot of things that have been updated and upgraded throughout the whole district, which has been wonderful. But here's a section, particularly an auditorium that's opened in 1960, that has no grounded power inside. So what's the next step to finally do that? You know that this could be the time. And you know that there's also community looking for that too. There are community resources. I have my Nutcracker Flyer right here for everyone to go see that because it's not just utilized by the district. It's also utilized by everyone in the community. I understand that that's another consistency that you have to work with, but it is a reality. That is the biggest and most used space, you know, in the entire community. So I'm not here to tell you that. But I am here to say, to be bold, think big. It's what we tell all the art students to do. It's what we tell all the students to do. We say, go out there and make big mistakes or make big successes. And don't think small as you're trying to do this. So make no small plans. That's why we're here. So as we look at the presentations, think about not just what's going to be happening today, but what's going to be happening 60 years from now? Because that's what the current facilities are now serving when they were first designed. So the auditorium right now is called the Richard C. Johnson Auditorium. Richard Johnson established the arts programming in 1950 when the high school first was established and then retired in 1986. At his retirement, he reminded us as all to be bold. So that's why I'm telling you this now. Because what the thespian motto is, is what you should do now, act well your part, for therein all the honor lies. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next up is Mary Beth Norton and after Mary Beth will be Jacob Wegworth.
Good evening. My name is Mary Beth Norton and I am a BHS Fine Arts Alumni, class of 92. I am the current choir parent organization co-chair and have been a part of the District 220 Fine Arts Program for the last 40 years. Tonight, I am not only speak on behalf of my family, but many families. The Fosters, the Polizzi's, the Osmesons, the Sunderland's, the Pro Cup families, to name a few. All these families have had a part in the BHS Fine Arts Program for over 50 years. Long has the discussion been to redo the fine arts area. Yet here we are, 30 years later, and everyone has yet to see it. I took my first seat in the auditorium in 1984 to see my cousin play in the Holiday Band Concert and I can still, still, sit in that same seat today. Nothing has changed. The auditorium has stood still in time while other parts of the school have been refurbished. I have performed on that stage many, many times and to say that the space needs an update would be an understatement. But not only the theater, the entire fine arts area. The number of students we have committed to the fine arts program are nothing new. We have always had hundreds, no thousands, of students who have found a home in the fine arts. Without our band, we would have no pep in our pep rallies. Without our choir, we would have no one to sing the National Anthem at our home games. And without our amazing visual arts students, our high school would also be, our walls would be also barren. Our student and faculty are not the only community members to use our fine art spaces. Our auditorium is booked out to other groups consistently for events and performances throughout the year. Even those from the outside districts use our space. If we are to be the state-of-the-art school that it seems all the District 220 administrators are striving for, then we should have a performing arts center that represents that goal. The fine arts program should have never been in a position where the theater has been brought to such a sad state of repair. Why do we, the parents, students and volunteers, have to keep fighting and pushing and try to keep up with other high schools in the area? Why are we trying to keep up with the Joneses? We are Barrington High School and we should never have to keep up. We should always be the school and the district that leads by example. Thank you for your time.
Jacob. Maybe you guys could just stand in, in, in your support so we can get through the public comment here. Next up is Jacob Wegworth and then after Jacob is Margot Dollstream. Thank you.
Hello. Hello.
Hello.
Is the mic working?
It is.
Oh, there we go. Hello. My name is Jacob Wegworth. I am a junior here at Barrington High School. I've been involved in theater, choir, dance and studio TV related classes here at the school. I'm a jack of all trades. We are a school lucky enough to be able to provide all of these classes and extracurriculars and many more that I have not mentioned. With that being said, the spaces we currently have for these fine arts activities simply are either too small or outdated. All, all over the school for the past year now, several areas of the school have seen significant changes and construction, with many of those already being in much better shape than our own school's auditorium. We are asking as a community, as Barrington, to be given the same opportunities and the same treatment as those other aspects of the high school that have been granted renovations. There are currently over a thousand students enrolled at Barrington High School that are in some way, shape or form involved in the fine arts. But it's near impossible at the current given moment to accommodate for all of us in these current spaces. We are asking for a new space, not just for us standing here today, but for those who will come after us in those 20 years from now, to have more opportunities than we could. Thank you.
Margot, and then after Margot will be Daniel Stevens.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Margot Dollstream and I'm, understand you'll be hearing several proposals for a fine arts space or an all-new facility and I'd like to speak to the opportunity created by going big. I'm a parent of three daughters who have all participated in several fine arts disciplines and I think my youngest is trying to set a record on how many of them that she can be involved in. My daughters have also all danced competitively through Batay Academy. Through our dance school, we've traveled about an hour away to attend competitions. Most recently to the Batavia High School Arts Center, both Oswego High School Performing Arts Centers and the Jenna Sea Theater in Waukegan. There seems to be a void of rentable facilities for, for dance competition companies in the geographic area between Batavia, Oswego and Waukegan. One of the former dance teachers at Batay works for one of those dance competition companies. She confirmed there are very few facilities that meet their needs and the ones they can utilize fill up quickly. The other information she shared with me is what they pay to rent Performing Arts Center for their competitions, which is about $10,000 a day or $30,000 for a three-day weekend rental. If Barrington would build facilities that could meet the needs of dance competition companies, which I suspect would encompass all of the challenges and improvements recommendations made by BHS Fine Arts staff and students last spring and if Barrington would be able to rent the space out for 10 weekends out of a calendar year, that could represent a quarter million dollars, assuming operating costs wouldn't exceed $50,000 for those 10 weekends. I think that could offset the expense of building a big facility and would ease the mind of taxpayers, knowing the burden wouldn't all be on them for a referendum. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Stevens? And then after Daniel will be Kyoko Ryden.
Hello. My name is Daniel Stevens. I'm a senior at Barrington High School. I am involved in, I'm involved in theater and choir and a cappella and a bunch of other stuff at the high school. And everybody here has already said the reason why we need it, right? But I just want to be the kind of representation and tell you the specific number, not specific, but a number of people and students here who need this stuff and really need an update. As a lot of other people said earlier, we've been here, I mean, the auditorium's been here since 1960. Chairs have been here since 1960. Speakers probably changed, I don't know, 20, 30 years ago. We got a new digital sound system, but our old sound system is still there since I think the early 2000s, 90s. It's just been there. It's been the same thing. We need a change. But yeah. In everything I'm involved in, which is choir, theater, a cappella and woodworking, we are all in, that's around three to 400 people, students actually. And there's probably, I would say, a thousand more. There's probably 1,500 of us. That's a little less than half of the whole entire student population at Barrington High School. That's probably more than sports, I think. I think there's only like 900 in sports. And sports gets a lot of stuff and I don't want to create a division. I'm just saying I think we should be equal and we should get as much as they do. So basically, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyoko?
Hello. My name is Kyoko. I am a senior here at Barrington High School. I've been involved in orchestra, band, choir, multiple fine art classes at the high school, as well as magical theater, tech crew and tech crew outside of theater, as well as a cappella. Most notably, me and Daniel Stevens have been one of the original members of the overtones. I'd like to address a few things that concern me. As you've heard tonight, our fine arts program here at the high school has been very rich and plentiful, with a little less than half of students in Barrington High School being enrolled in some fine arts. However, there have been talks of the new fine arts facility for the past few decades and yet nothing has come, been completely set in stone. Additionally, for the past, past year, we, there have been renovations done on the school. And while most bathrooms were approved upon, the fine arts wing saw no such updates. I'd also like to address a couple of safety concerns in terms of fire safety, fire safety in the auditorium and wheelchair accessibility in the four-set auditorium, as these two these are things that have been used a lot more than the fields at the high school ever have been, more plentiful and have been used by people who do have disabilities, physical and mental, who need these kind of things in order to be safe. I'd also like to address something that was more concerning in terms of last year, is being the P.A. system or the lack thereof that we have in our practice rooms. Last year, there was an active shooter, and that morning, there was an a cappella group that was performing and practicing in those practice rooms. They had no idea of the active shooter, and they were put completely at risk and in danger. And when they were informed, they had no idea on what to do, and they had no, there was no accessible communication. And it's not acceptable for us to be able to sit here while they were put at risk during that situation. I ask, what insurances can we incorporate into our system as a fallback concept to rely on if there is a new fine arts wing, or if it ends up not happening, to ensure the safety as us as students, as well as the safety as our children who may be part of the system later? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kyoko. Daniel McCopan? McCopan? Is that right, Daniel? McCopan. Thank you, Daniel.
Hello, board and Barrington community. I am Daniel McCopan, a junior at Barrington High School. Aside from previously being involved in band, I am currently involved in orchestra, chamber choir, ten-man a cappella, and overtone a cappella, magicals, drama club, and all the shows at BHS and the Fine Arts Leadership Council, to name a few. As someone who's very involved in the fine arts in the Barrington community, I'd like to express to the board the ineffably profound impact that the arts have had over the course of my life in Barrington Two Twenty School District. We have a very large, yet simultaneously very tight-knit, fine arts community with teachers that are incredibly supportive, passionate, and that genuinely care about their students. Special shout-out to Mr. Pemberton, Mr. Sheldon, and Ms. Levin. And we have many, many students who have a deep interest and appreciation of the arts. The talents in this community constantly, never cease to amaze me, but I think that the facilities at our schools, though definitely very much appreciated by the high schoolers, fall very short of fitting the talent constantly demonstrated by Barrington students. And I believe the fifty percent of the students involved in the arts at the high school, as many others have mentioned tonight, not to mention all the other middle and elementary schoolers involved in the fine arts in the district, would definitely agree with me. As others tonight have mentioned, the opportunities provided to other parts of the high school are vastly inadequate to what the fine arts have received, especially with the recent construction around the school and around the district, which may mention that the last board meeting was noted that there would be large remains, surpluses in budget from those construction projects that could possibly use towards a new fine arts facility. I'd like to heavily recommend that the board seriously consider the new possible fine arts facilities for the sake of the students, to keep, as Dr. Winkelman and many of the district's initiatives this year, the students as the focus of this district, to keep them in our mind's eye, and to promote the individual interests and benefits, the opportunities related to the fine arts provide for them. Thank you, board.
Thank you. And last up, Indujit Sidhu.
Excuse me, I'm not very good at public speaking, but I'll give this my best shot. Hi, everybody. It's so good to spend this evening with you.
Could you please state your name for us?
Sure. My name is Indujit Sidhu. I guess the way it's written up there.
Just making sure I pronounce it correctly.
Basically, I wanted to tell all of you, on a personal level, by the way, I'm a nineteen eighty graduate of Rosin Road Elementary School, and I'm also a nineteen eighty-two graduate of Barrington, they call it Station now, but back then it was the only middle school, and I'm a nineteen eighty-six graduate of Barrington High School. So what I would like to say is, from a personal standpoint, the performing arts saved my life. And the reason I say that is because I was raised in a fairly conservative Indian family, and usually families that immigrate over here, they want all their kids to be doctors. Am I right? Anybody else? Any other? I'm sorry. Anyway, I am not one, but that was my outlet, and we had wonderful, wonderful. Oh, there's Pam Hanley back there. All right. Pam was one of the wonderful teacher, by the way, I aged, she did not. So Pam was our choir director back then, and what was wonderful was, she's the one who said, hey, I was a percussionist, I was a drummer, she said, hey, you don't just have to drum with the jazz band, or symphonic bands, or marching band. You could actually drum, you could back up like a swing choir, a show choir, you could back up other vocalists. I never thought about that till she brought it up. I never, that just blew my mind. My whole point is, the experience, you kind of take that with you for a lifetime, whether you're in dance, whether you're in choir, in band. And one thing I wanted to mention, is it Margot? Margot Dallstream? Am I pronouncing that right? She mentioned from a revenue standpoint, not just for dance competitions, but you could also build a facility that you could have other touring groups use, other groups, music, other, I guess, other performing arts touring groups for other musicals. So anyway, what I'm trying to say is, there's a lot that can be done with it. I think the need, you already know what the need is. I just wanted to give it a personal view. Like I said, that's, that's the only reason I live, is because I have that background that was given to me from Barrington High School. So, and I use it now. When I, when I play with all the musical groups I play with now. So anyway, that's just all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Before we go on to your report, just a couple of things. I know that you're already going to be following up with Larry Segbauer, who spoke at the beginning, so I just want to acknowledge that, that that's already underway. Could you, if you can during your report, or at a later time, just give us an update on the bathrooms in the east side of the building and the P.A. system? You've heard some safety concerns there. And then last, I just want to make sure that it's understood that the current referendum, we've already agreed to what we can spend the money on, and we cannot spend any more money on, we've agreed to spend money on the design for the fine arts and Performing Arts Center, but we can't, I don't think we can attribute any more of those dollars to renovation. So there was a comment made about there might be some extra dollars left.
Yep.
So I just want to make sure that that's clarified. Then with that, that's all I had from.
Perfect. Yep, I can follow up on both of those.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep. All right. So for my report tonight, I have a few items I'd like to share with the board. If we can go to the first slide. So Sandra commented on this, but I have a few more details to share. On Friday, September twenty-second, our state superintendent, Dr. Tony Sanders, visited our schools, and he was able to actually attend all three of our levels, elementary and middle and high school. So I'm very grateful for his time, that he was able to stick around throughout the morning and see a little bit of Barrington. He was able to interact with our staff and discuss learning experiences that our students were engaged in. He visited classrooms and learning spaces, and you can see in the pictures, students at lines on the left side explaining hands-on activities that they were constructing and testing in our new STEM space. In addition, we have on the far right, our middle school students at Station that were working on moon phases at their table stations in science class, and of course, in the middle, I love that Dr. Sanders and his enthusiasm that he wanted to try out some of our new equipment at Barrington High School. You know, after the tours, I think this is important to note, you had alluded to the Tribune article, and if you haven't seen it, this is the quote that Dr. Sanders shared after visiting our schools. He said, "I would love to see every district in the state be able to match and mirror the things that are being put in place here at Barrington." You know, when I reflect on that comment, it's really nice to receive that feedback, but it's also important to consider the perspective that Dr. Sanders has. You know, there's eight hundred and fifty-two school districts in the state of Illinois, and for him to make a comment about the wonderful things happening here in Barrington, and that other districts hopefully can match or mirror that, I think is really saying something. So again, I really appreciate Dr. Sanders' time, and hope he'll be able to come back out, visit our school again. But with that, I want to thank the community for all the support, because we were able to highlight and showcase some of those new learning spaces. And you know, that's really an opportunity for us to recognize our community for their generous support for those improvements that have taken place, and I think what really does set Barrington apart and make this a special place. So a little bit of update there. Moving along, we also, in the last two weeks since our last board meeting, we are able to attend the Barrington Area Council of Governments, or known as BayCog. This is an association of governments in the Barrington area committed to regional collaboration. Last week, Dr. Altshuler and I had an opportunity to meet with the mayors and village presidents that make up BayCog, and we provided an update and an overview of the significant work taking place in our school districts, such as our fifty-year celebration, our strategic planning, and our Build Two Twenty projects. In addition, we were able to answer and clarify questions. I think it's important that our mayors and village presidents understand the work that's going on in the district and the highlights, but also have an opportunity to ask questions and have a better understanding of what's going on in our schools on a regular basis. Dr. Altshuler, would you like to share and comment on the resolution that was also presented to us that evening?
Yes. So it really was a very nice collaborative meeting, and again, what we were celebrating is community partnerships, and you know, one of our priorities is to communicate, and so this was a very good group to be kind of communicating with and sharing our vision and kind of getting their input. So the BayCog then passed a resolution. The resolution states congratulating Barrington Community Unit District Two Twenty on its fiftieth anniversary as a unit district, and I'll just read the end. It says, you know, "Now therefore, it is resolved that the Executive Board of BayCog, one, appreciates the ongoing partnership between BayCog and Barrington Two Twenty to engage area residents, to provide opportunities for interaction between our current and future leaders, and, two, congratulates Barrington Two Twenty on its fiftieth anniversary as a unit district, and extends its best wishes for continued success educating our region's students." So it was a very fruitful evening, and I was glad I could be part of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving right along, as one of our high school students pointed out, I did open the school year with a focus on the importance of students and making sure students are at the center of what we do, so I do appreciate that comment. And with that being said, tonight I'd like to report on something that I had previewed. If you follow me on X, the social media platform formerly known as Twitter, I previewed that I was going to actually showcase a few of our students tonight. So with that, last week, I was able to meet with three very impressive students at Barrington High School and learn more about a book that they authored called Breaking the Code with Gabriella. And at this time, if I could invite Sarah Pinto, Hafsa Khan, and Cindy Wang, if you would please come up and join me up front. Thank you. I'd like to share a little bit about your book, if I could, and then give you an opportunity to also comment. So the book is Breaking the Code with Gabriella. It's the story of a young girl with a passion for STEM and how she faces challenges by joining the robotics team at her school, which is mainly a male-dominated activity. Along the way, Gabriella receives support from her coach, Mr. B., who may or may not have be influenced in the room tonight, by sticking with it, and she learns some valuable lessons along the way, such as, you're going to experience ups and downs. In the end, you'll discover that she is a role model for a younger girl that has inspired to join her school's team and set an example for those younger students. The story, it's amazing. It's incredibly well-written. They authored and illustrated this book, but it has a lot of really good STEM terminology that I believe is broken down into easily-understood concepts, explains what coding is, lists examples of career paths that you could pursue in the field. It's just chock-full of really good information in addition to a meaningful story. But what was interesting, though, when I, when I met with the students last week, we started to have a conversation around Sarah, Hafsa, and Cindy being able to actually share this book and take advantage of us being a unit school district and possibly interacting and truly taking that story concept to life, to actually be role models for our younger students. I am proud to say, I shared this with our elementary principals, and within minutes, and by the end of the day, all of our elementary principals said, absolutely, we would like to have these students. So not only is the story meaningful where it concludes with Gabriella recognizing that she's a role model for a younger student, we're going to make that come to life. We're actually going to have these, these three impressive students go back and actually meet and be role models for our elementary students, and I think that's really taking advantage of the power of a unit district. So great story. I want to mention that the story talks about the robotics team, and we do have Mr. Brennemeyer and Mrs. Lewis here, who are the robotics coaches at Barrington High School, and I think do, do have a role or a part to play in the book. But with that, I'd like to stop and just give you an opportunity to share a little bit about your experience writing this book with our board.
Don't be shy.
Yeah, so I can start out. So I know that our inspiration for the book was kind of through outreach, we do a lot of, through robotics, we do a lot of outreach projects, so trying to reach out to the community and spread the messages of first, which is the competition we participate in. So for this season, we are really trying to focus on trying to do outreach projects in the community to incorporate women in STEM, because I know even on our own robotics team, and in different advanced STEM classes at the high school, there's a big gender discrepancy, where there's not a lot of women in the classes and on the teams. So we really wanted to focus our outreach project on that, and we thought that writing a picture book would be a great way, just hit them at that younger age.
So when did you get the idea for this? How long's this been in the offing? When did you start?
Yeah, wait till you get this answered, because I asked the same question.
We started in May of this year, so we worked on it over the summer, and we got it finished by August.
So from May till now, I'm holding a book that they took from concept to actually a published book.
Wow.
I guess the biggest reason why we wanted to spread this message in the format of a picture book was because there's lots of research that's come out that says that, like, the gender gap in STEM starts at a really young age, like you can start as young as second grade, first grade. So by having a picture book, which targets people of that age, we really hope that it can be something for young girls to see and realize that STEM is a space for them, even if other influences are showing them that it might not be.
Awesome. Anything else to share, or board any questions for our students?
Where can we buy it? I'm now obsessed with it. Yeah.
It's complicated right now. Something up soon, so we'll keep you updated.
We've got twenty copies on order. We'll get more if we need them. All right. Okay.
Distribution property that we'll happily fix.
So coaches, anything, you work with the students, they're part of the robotics, anything you'd like to add or share?
There are women in the spotlight. It's all them. You just kind of sit and make sure that they have the resources and have access to reality, to make their light shine brighter. Sarah's interested in math studies, already signing up for math courses that are above and beyond what the high school offers. She's looking at those today. She's a student in computer science class. So they are top-notch and all-around great kids and great inspiration for the elementary students, especially the young girls that have a hard time seeing themselves in either that career, or even in that classroom as a computer science teacher. I see it. It's, some years are really good, some years aren't so good, but we really try and do our best to give the world that.
Excellent.
I have a question for the three of you, Sarah, Hafsa, and Cindy. I recognize your faces from leading elementary robotics teams at Huff and other places. Can you talk a little bit about your own involvement? I think you were Gabriella's age, probably, when you started with robotics and STEM. Can you talk about, you know, the influence that had on, you know, your writing, your continued involvement in robotics and STEM, and like, what more can we do as a district to continue to, to support and encourage STEM, and especially girls in STEM?
Cindy's got this one.
So personally, I started in FLL.
So personally, I started in FLL in fourth grade. I know, I think Chandler was on it too. And I think I had a coach, Ms. Ravasuk, and she really inspired me even at like a younger age, which is obviously why we're writing the picture book. Like when I was in fourth grade, she really showed me how interesting robotics and STEM concepts could be. And that kind of inspired me to do it throughout middle school and high school, and that's why I was able to find or like meet Sarah and Hafsa and be able to do this.
So just speaking as a parent of a young lady who excels in math but doesn't necessarily follow her, her, you know, her skills because not a lot of her friends are into this, I want to give you kudos for stepping up, doing this, and providing an example for the young ladies out there who can, who would benefit from seeing this. Thank you.
I like the title, Curious. You know, that's a hard part sometimes authors say, getting the title, but it's good.
Well, thank you.
Wait, I have one thing too. Exactly, two things. I want to personally invite you guys to get involved with the Dream Day event that we hold at the middle school level to encourage women to go into STEM fields. So I don't know if we've got a date for it or not that you've got yet this year, but I'll make sure that I get it to all of you, because we host over 150 or about 150 student middle school women and talk to them about women in STEM careers. We've been doing it now, I think this will be our third year in a row. We had to put it off during COVID, but I want to personally invite you to come and share your book and, and be a part of that if you haven't already been a part of that. And then second, I just want to make a comment as a mother of a woman in STEM, right? This is for not just you guys, but for everybody in the room. A lot of what the universities are looking for is not just women that are interested in STEM, but that have a fine arts background as well. So I, it was interesting to learn that as my own daughter was looking for, to go into computer science, and they said they're looking for people that not only can code or are interested in STEM, but can also be creative. So I just wanted to, to point that out as well.
Anyone else, anything else to share? Thank you for sharing, sharing your creativity and talents with us, and I can't wait to hear how the visits at our elementary and the inspiration that you'll continue to provide for the students in 220. So thank you.
Thank you.
It's a teaser.
Thank you. All right, so that was just another example of things that are going on. I hope to bring more information about the truly remarkable things that are going on throughout our, our school districts in future reports, so stay tuned. I think I do have one more slide. I also wanted to comment that NICH provides annual ratings and rankings for schools across the country. Proud to share that the latest ranking that was just released last week is that out of the 386 unit school districts in the state of Illinois, Barrington was recognized as the second best community unit school district in the state out of those 386. So I thought that was impressive ranking and worth noting. And that concludes my report unless there's any questions from the board.
Gosh, I thought of him and I forgot.
We're going to address that question Sandra brought up, the two things Sandra brought up from public.
I'm going to follow up on that and do that work prior to the next meeting.
My, my competitive spirit has to ask who was first.
I knew it was going to be that. It's a, it's a district that rhymes with Bayer pill.
Hmm, okay.
That's about as close as I'm going to get. Naperville School District is the number one ranked according to NICH. But I'm confident the work we're doing with our Framework 220 and our strategic objectives and so forth, that we will continue to strive to, to reach that top, that top ranking, so.
Dr. Winkelman?
Yeah.
What were the objective or subjective measures that were utilized to measure ranking?
There's a number. If you go on their website, it's about not only test scores, but it's also about feedback, demographics, there's a number of rankings. I can share the, the link with the board in my Thursday report.
Excellent, thank you.
Speaking of links, how about a link to the Tribune article and the, and the review that comes out on what we did in the board meeting tonight?
I can do that.
I think you need a subscription though, right?
You might, but we can still put a link.
Okay.
I think we've done that before.
We'll make sure you have what you need.
Okay, for sure. All right.
Okay. All right. So next up, board is informational reports. We had nothing. I'm just double checking to make sure I didn't miss. Okay, so then Board Committee Reports.
The PTO Presidents Council met, and per our new format, Leah and I were the two board members who attended the session. As, as the community may or may not know, for the PTO Presidents Council, it's twice a month that they meet or what?
They meet twice a month.
Twice a month.
And it's changed a little bit, I think this year, that it used to be that the superintendent and the board rep would go to every meeting, and I think they're going to do their business at one meeting and our representatives will go to the other meeting.
Correct.
Alternating meetings. And so we're also rotating this year, so the PTO presidents will get to know all the board members and get, and we'll get to know, all of us will get to know all of them. So that'll be interesting. And just as an information for the board members, what happens is Dr. Winkelman will give an update, and then the board members will give an update to the presidents about what's, what's, what happened at the previous school board meetings.
And it's a fantastic group. It's all the PTO presidents from elementary, middle, and high school. And a couple of things to note, there, there's really a lot of great dialogue and idea ideation that goes on and sharing. A couple of things that were pretty interesting is that when we talked about flexible learning, you know, we talk about it kind of in our high school pilot program in the academic sense, but a lot of the PTO presidents were thinking about physical space in furniture. And so there was a lot of sharing there, and I think Josh Carpenter suggested a, you know, a subsequent meeting of principals and PTOs to talk about some of the things that have worked well. I know different PTOs in different schools have initiated programs around furniture and, and what would work best. Some have actually scattered flexible furniture in different rooms, some have had just specific classrooms. So I think that that was a, a good, really good discussion that came out of that. And then something else is that we shared an update about where we are with Free Full Day Kindergarten, which is something that our board is studying and that I know your, the administration is discussing with us as well. And some, a great suggestion that came up is if we, if we do have this and if we do do something like a lab school kindergarten, two sections at the high school, how do those families, if we move forward with that, how do those families feel integrated at their local school? And the PTO presidents made a commitment to say, hey, we're going to make sure that as long as we have their email addresses, we're going to be in communication with those families. If we go that route, they'll be invited to field day, they'll be integrated into the homeschool so that that transition, because we're focusing a lot on transition points as part of our strategic plan, so that this transition from kindergarten to first grade would be easier for those families. So those are some of the ideas that came out. Again, fantastic group. Leah, anything to add?
You know, just, excuse me, to piggyback off the, the conversation about the flexible learning, it's interesting, you know, as a board, we've been talking about this, as administration, we've been talking about it, but as, as far as the community goes, even the, the PTO presidents, the understanding of what it really is, is still not clear to a lot of people. And so I think that's something that we can work on our messaging and explaining. And if you've visited, you know, the sixth grade wing at the middle school and seen how these new areas are working where there's three classrooms, and then they get up and they switch seats, and then there's some area in like the out, out of the room space for projects and working, you see it, and it's like, wow, that's amazing. But it, you know, everybody in town doesn't get to go in school during the day, it would be too disruptive. So it's, if we can explain it better, I think it'll be helpful for the community and for the families and, and for the students, you know? It'd be just a really good thing. So that was something I took away from that too. It's a, it's a good think tank. Those, those presidents are communicating with families and communicating back with us, and they, they get a lot of feedback.
Excellent.
It's a good group.
Also, this wasn't a committee meeting, but Katie Karaman and I did have a chance to do what some of our other fellow board members have done, and we took a comprehensive fine arts tour of, of our VHS facilities. And Dr. Winkelman and Bridget Tileston kind of showed us what we had. We got all over, we were in the woodshop seeing where your sets were and, and the space you had to share. We climbed ladders to the catwalk, tried not to knock ourselves out on the HVAC with, with the dark spaces up there. But it's, you know, I know we have a presentation coming up, but it was really informative to see what we do have, what we don't have, what areas were inaccessible, what areas needed some safe, a lot of safety tweaks. We looked at where, where students are changing, the, the changing space we do have, the lack of changing space, where rehearsals are going on, sometimes in the hallways, sometimes in different band and concert rooms. So I think that, that was something that was really informative for us as we continue to move forward with, with design presentations. So really appreciate, thank you for the tour. And, and I think paired with a tour that we had the chance to take a few months ago, which were updated fine art spaces from schools like Lake Zurich and in Norwich, it was really, really enlightening to see what they had, like, oh, you can take a set through this three story door and, and we may not have that space. So I think it was just really good comparison, because I think we do an amazing job with what we do have, but it was really helpful for us as board members to see the things that we lack and that could help improve our, our fine art spaces. So that happened as well.
Thank you.
The Equity Committee met since the last board meeting, and this is another committee that a little bit of change is happening compared to last year. So we're going to rotate board members through the Equity Committee as well. So Sandra Bradford and I were attending at the first one, and it'll be different board members at the monthly meetings. So the team will get to know different board members, different board members will get to know the team, and everyone will get a good understanding of, of what good things this committee is doing. So the format of the meeting has changed a little bit too. There's going to be updates at every meeting and then some things to discuss at every meeting, and then a little bit of learning. So at this meeting, we had a chance to have a presentation about the district curriculum review process for the social emotional learning from Jordan Anderson. And just like all the curriculum, there's a evaluate what we've got, decide if we should get something different, explore those options, get something different if we're going to, and then see how it's working. So we're at the beginning stage of saying, wow, there's a lot of other good options out there, let's look at them and find out what they are. So that was exciting to hear about. There's some really good programs out there that we'll be hearing about in the future. And then we had some discussion about student focus groups and how that could be something that we want to do that'll match our strategic plan, to have different groups of students who may have similar concerns or issues, have a safe space to talk about these things. So that's something in the plans that's happening a little bit and is for the future too. We also did some learning as a group. We reviewed a, an article called The Long Shadow. We looked at the ISBE Strategic Plan, so ISBE, the Illinois State Board of Education, a lot of acronyms here, has a strategic plan for equities. We looked at it, and I think we match it a lot, and we may even be ahead of it, which is good to know. We also looked at the Learning 2025 Report. And then we had some events that we might want to be aware of. The Be Strong Community Wellness Walk is October 15th in Citizens Park. And there are going to be future opportunities for the community to get involved with this committee too. So keep listening and watching and paying attention. So this is a very good meeting. Anything else?
Just one thing I want to add is that the, all the minutes and notes from the meeting are now on the website as well, so they're available for everyone to see. So we'd want to be a bit more transparent than we have in the past, so you'll see change there. It was exciting to be a part, it was my first one. Been waiting a couple of years for that, so. That was great. Any other committee reports? Okay, let's go into our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, let me just communicate what's in the consent agenda. We have minutes from September 19th, both open and closed. We have a finance report. I just want to mention and recognize the, the Daughters of the American Revolution, the Signal Hill chapter, to all elementary schools donated 25 books in honor of Constitution Day. So that was great, thank you very much. And we have a revised personnel report, so if you guys could take a look at that. I'm assuming there's no questions, so I'm going to go ahead and call a roll call unless I hear any. Let's do a roll call.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Leah Colister Lazari?
Yes.
Diana Clopton?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Barry Altschuler?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. We have a couple of action items now. Do we have a motion to approve the 2024-2025 academic calendar?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we discussed this at our last meeting. Is there anything we'd like to just cover before?
Yeah, I do have one question.
Okay.
It says on the calendar that the last day of classes are 5:22. It says it verbally, but, but on the calendar, it's really five, it's the next week. I'm just wondering why it says that. Calendar begins, calendar ends.
Where does it say?
Classes end.
Oh, on the gray?
Yeah, on, on the gray, in the written part. I'm wondering if that's, that's just an oversight or is, or the?
I think that's going to need to be revised. Oh.
So we are voting on the calendar, which does not have that portion on it, I believe.
Correct, right.
So, but the memo, we might want to make an update.
We'll revise the memo.
Okay, good catch. So, but that, that mention is not included in what we are voting on.
Fine.
It's okay, it's okay. I just want to make sure we don't, we don't, just trying to take care of this, we don't need to amend the motion, I don't think. Okay?
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, let's do a roll call.
Barry Altschuler?
Yes.
Leah Colister Lazari?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Diana Clopton?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Let's see, do we have a motion to approve the settlement of Altria Group's portion of the vaping litigation?
So moved, second.
Any questions?
Want to just review what we had? Yeah, I mean, I can comment on it. Obviously, our, our district participated in a mass action lawsuit, recognizing the harmful effects of vaping on our children. And so the lawsuit resulted in a settlement that you're approving tonight. So I don't really, I mean, I think we've discussed, you know, those pieces from this. Our district team will then start to work on how do we help support and address, whether that's prevention, resources, materials, and so forth to address this topic with our students.
Okay. I guess I'll just add that I just thank the board for allowing us and agreeing to be part of the, part of this litigation. All right, so with that, let's do a roll call.
Leah Colister Lazari?
Yes.
Barry Altschuler?
Yes.
Diana Clopton?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, next, do I have a motion that the board approve and authorize the superintendent or designee to sign the purchase and sale agreement for real estate for purchase of 1525 South Grove Avenue, Unit 103, Barrington, Illinois, in substantially the form presented to the board, and further authorize the board president, secretary, superintendent or designees, and the board attorney to prepare and execute all documents necessary to effectuate the purchase?
So moved, second.
All right, you want to just give a quick overview of what that means?
Yeah, so this purchase helps us address the needs of our students that are in our transition program now and in future years, anticipating some enrollment growth in that program. So the purchase will allow us to have extra space to meet the needs of those students.
Excellent.
Yeah.
All right, let's do a roll call.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Diana Clopton?
Yes.
Barry Altschuler?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Leah Colister Lazari?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. All right, so we're up to our discussion items, everyone. So first up- So first up is a discussion on our BHS course offerings.
Here comes the team.
Welcome.
Here they come.
Good evening. Man, magic. All right.
That was nice. Nice.
It's always nice with the person. All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having us this evening. We're here tonight to share with you our recommendation for the 24-25 school year, Barrington High School Course Offerings. But before we begin, I would like to take a couple of minutes and thank the group that has worked so hard on our revised process and all of their thinking and collaboration and providing feedback. And so not only Mr. McWilliams and Ms. Hanson, but all of our department chairs, the ones who are able to join us tonight, and of course, the ones who had other commitments. So I would like to take a moment to publicly thank them and give them the opportunity to introduce themselves and their role at the high school. Mitch, would you like to start?
Eddie, where are life skills department?
Chris, we can have two sides.
Bridget, I see you back there. Yep. Carrie McCaslin is our executive director of future readiness and instructional programs who supported this process as well. She's currently in the overflow room.
Thank you, Carrie.
All right. So it, our mission statement is always important, and especially when it revolves around work that so clearly is impacting our students, of empowering personal excellence in every learner. And I think the course offerings that you'll hear tonight really reflect giving our students the opportunity to do just that. In terms of our strategic priority alignment, our alignment tonight relates to three of our priority areas, which are inclusive education, future readiness, as well as personalized learning. I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Hanson.
Oh, thank you. I've never had a mic guy before. So just a reminder of the new process that we're using. So we start off with proposal development and an initial review. Then it goes into the BHS admin team, so our entire group. And Dr. Byrne joined us for our second review.
And I think Carrie McCaslin now is in the room, in the house. Video delay. She got the, she got the memo to come on in. Thank you for joining us.
The third phase of review is to Dr. Winkelman, an exec counsel. And then we do a student council review so that they can provide some feedback for us as well. And then now we're at our last step with a board review. So that's our process. We, it's a very rigorous process. We are able to vet out a lot of our ideas. And so what's coming to you right now is the best of all of the proposals that we received. So we have a handful of course additions that we'd like to talk through a little bit with you. So we have five new areas that we're considering offering for next year with your approval. So one of them is we're looking at adding a welding sequence for our students. So we don't offer any welding classes. These would be offered through Harper, so students would be able to earn college credit. And because we're offering two classes, it would count for a diploma endorsement. So they would be able to get that for them. So we're very excited about that. We're also looking at partnering with Harper to provide an entrepreneurship internship. I need to slow down. That's a tough one. So that'll, that'll round out that pathway as well. This is the first year that we've had incubator with dual credit, and so then we'll be adding an internship class as well for the students who don't get into accelerated, accelerator who aren't funded. We're offering a new class in our math sequence called Functions, Relations, and Trigonometry. So this is a class that's designed for students who have finished Algebra II or Algebra II trig, but maybe aren't ready for a dual credit class or an AP class, their junior or senior year. So this class will provide a nice bridge for students from Algebra II trig to pre-calculus senior year. If they're interested in taking that as a junior, they can also take it as, as a senior. Another class that we're excited about offering is college chemistry. That isn't the title. We're, we're workshopping titles right now. We need a little bit more creativity. But this is a class, again, a partnership with Harper, that will provide an entry-level intro to chemistry for dual credit, so students will earn college credit on our campus. We're very, very excited about this one because it allows students who are interested in a science pathway, an option to take a dual credit class in a single period. So they don't have to lock into AP Chem, which is a double block period. So they can have room in their schedule for fine arts and wonderful things like that. So we're super pumped about that class. And then finally, this is the one that I'm probably the most excited about. In May, I received a beautifully crafted email from one of our students, making an argument that we should add the brand-new AP African-American Studies class. And so we went through the process, and we're very excited to be offering that with your approval to students next year. So that is in a pilot phase right now. So the last two years, AP has been running pilots of that. And then it'll be ready for everyone starting in 24-25. So we'll be one of the first schools out of the pilot to, to launch that class. But the fact that it came from a student was very, very exciting. When I talked to the student council exec board, exec board about that, you could see the wheels spinning, like, oh, we can do that? We didn't know that we could propose classes, too. So hopefully, we'll see a little bit more of that as we continue on. We also have a couple of course deletions that we want to go through with you. One of them is we're removing the sophomore option for blended PE. You'll remember last year at this presentation, Fabi, the department chair for life skills, did a beautiful presentation for you, outlining a new program for our 10th through 12th graders offered choice, the heart zone monitors, so a lot of personalization and choice for students, which has now made blended PE for sophomores redundant. So we no longer need that. We have it for everyone. And then finally, our Functions, Relations, and Trigonometry class is going to replace two other courses. So we're going to sunset our regular pre-calculus class, and we're also going to sunset our transition to college math class with Functions, Relations, and Trigonometry. And then we just have a handful of other smaller changes that we wanted to keep you aware of. So we have a couple of description changes for our Pro Start 2 class, which is our culinary class, the second in the sequence. We're adding dual credit, so we'll have two dual credit classes for Pro Start 1 and Pro Start 2. So our culinary students will be able to earn a diploma endorsement. We're starting a new pathway for Journalism 1, so that will add a journalism credit. And then we're also tweaking the biology, the human biology. So we thought we were going to get two dual credit sections for that. We only got one. And then we have a couple of title changes as well that just align better with sequencing, either for certifications or for transcripts eighth through, eighth through ninth grade, or just to better align with what's actually happening in the class.
And with that, we will take any questions for.
So with a new class like AP African-American Studies, is there a minimum number of kids you would want or else you would maybe not offer it? Or would you offer it no matter what?
Well, it's important to know right now that it would be intending your approval be an offering in our course offering book available to students to choose. And as we look at all of our course requests as they come in, we will look at our section numbers and the number of students who register to take the course and determine if it's viable to run or not next year.
And just, just to repeat, that, that's with every class, not just this one. It's with every class.
It's part of our process.
I just want to make sure that that was understood.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So the new classes, college chemistry and functional, I can't say it.
Relations.
Relations. And, and you said they're dual credit and they're with Harper, but are they at the high school?
They're at the high school.
Okay.
College chemistry, all right, that one is Harper, a Harper class taught on our campus. Functions, Relations, and Trigonometry is a regular level course. That one is not a dual credit class.
Sorry. I'm getting it all confused. Okay. Thanks for helping me understand better. Okay. And then welding would be at Harper?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Just trying to, how much traveling and what's? And the entrepreneurship internship would be at, at someplace?
On our campus. Yeah. And then they would be able to go out. It would start on our campus, and then they would have internships that go out from there.
Those are exciting. That's exciting stuff.
A few questions. So college chemistry, AP African-American Studies, I, I did hear that was in pilot, so I, it's exciting that we might be the first crop to offer it as an actual class in terms of high schools around the country. What, what grade levels are you looking at for, for those two classes in terms of opening up to?
It would most likely be junior, senior level elective options.
Junior, senior elective for social studies and science?
For science.
Okay. Great. And the, so for, if we're sunsetting pre-cal, my understanding is there's something like four pre-cal classes with accelerated pre-cal, AP accelerated pre-cal, so all of the other ones are staying. It's just regular pre-cal would go.
Exactly. We're hoping that this class will help to better prepare students to take the AP pre-calculus class, which you guys approved last year at this time. And we're concerned, one, that it would look strange to have pre-calculus junior year and then AP pre-calculus senior year. So we're concerned about transcripts. And we also just think that the way that the teachers have built this course, that it'll be a better bridge from Algebra II trig. They were very, very thoughtful in the planning with Mr. Williams.
And one last question, that CI Mandarin sequence, would that involve, just for our Chinese emerging community, does that involve a whole series of classes? What does that encompass?
Yeah. The reason that we're making that change is because several years ago, we adopted a board, the board adopted a policy that allowed us to offer high school transcripted credit for certain classes that were taught at the middle school. So classes that were affected were all of our language classes. So any student who takes seventh and eighth grade, any language class for seventh and eighth grade gets a world language transcripted credit walking into high school. Algebra I is the other one. What we found when we actually were walking through the process of putting it on students' transcripts is that because the courses weren't named right, it looked like students were taking Chinese Mandarin three times in a row.
Oh, I see.
And it didn't look like a different class. So we decided to rename the entire sequence so it aligned with what we have for dual language. So it'll look the same. So the classes haven't changed. It just is, again, to make it look more clear on that transcript for students.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
It all looks very thoughtful. So appreciate your time and attention and, and thinking about those details on a transcript.
The team did an amazing job.
So thank you all very much.
Yeah. Your slide says questions and discussions, but I'm going to take the liberty of making a comment. I, I love that the thoroughness that the team went through and that we have staff and administrators looking at, but I also applaud the group for really getting our students involved in helping drive some of the decisions around course selections. That's tremendous. So thank you for doing that as well.
Thank you, everybody.
All right. Thank you. Let's see. Thank you for that. Thank you. So do we have another discussion topic? I think we do.
The main event.
Apparently, I'm, I've been presenting on the wrong topics. Usually, everybody's leaving when I get up.
Yeah. Well, you know, Dave, we're going to have to step it up. Maybe, maybe you could talk to the fine arts department and help with your presentations a little bit. I don't know. Let's see. So next up, obviously, is our discussion on finding performing arts presentation, but I'll just point out that I think we're going to hear a lot more than just about fine arts and performing arts. So buckle up.
We are. As the team's getting assembled, we do have some visuals that were printed out that I think the board may find helpful as we're going through the slides. And then in addition, at your seat, we have on large paper, and for those that are starting to become visually challenged like myself, we tried to enlarge it on the largest piece of paper possible, so it's easily readable and understood of the different options that our team is going to discuss tonight. And before the, the team starts the actual presentation, I, I think I just want to make a couple of comments, right? One, I think what makes Barrington Specials, we do have community engagement and, and a community that is interested in, in our schools and what's being provided in our schools. And so I thank everyone that came out tonight, commented, pointing things out that are important to our community, to make sure that our board and administration has that, that feedback. We've talked about that a number of times at this table. When we set priorities this year, that was one of the first things that the board talked about, was really wanting to make sure we had community engagement. So thank you for everyone for coming out tonight and sharing your perspective. And I, and I think when I, when I reflect on where we're at tonight and what led us here, right? Many of the things that are pointed out, they have been, they have been a challenge or a need that has, you know, been on people's minds, and it's, it's come up. And, you know, starting in 2018, when the board contemplated doing a master facility plan, of really trying to identify the needs in this community. If you remember, if we were to do all the work at once, it was over $500 million worth of work, and past boards had lots of conversations at the table about where do we start with $500 million? Where, where should that lead to? And certainly, the fine visual and performing arts area was, was on past referendum, so it, it is an area that has been pointed out. It, it's an area that I think our community and our board recognizes that needs to be addressed. However, we are missing some information. And so I think the decisions of past boards to make sure that we took our time to really do a, a complete analysis, do the deep dive, engage a, a highly competent architect firm, take tours, that Erin had commented, getting in that space, to really have a detailed and specific conversation of understanding what are our needs, what is the perspective of our, our community? And that includes students, staff, parents, community members, alumni that spoke tonight and so forth. So very excited to hear the presentation. Obviously, we have a, we kind of try to keep our presentations, like course offerings, to about 10 minutes or so. That's not going to occur tonight. You know, this is going to be a longer conversation. And not only is it a longer conversation tonight, this is the first of several conversations for this type of, of topic. I think, you know, being able to hear the information tonight, reflect on it, I'm sure there'll be some questions and discussion, but this will be an ongoing process throughout the fall. So I just want to reassure everyone and kind of set the stage of where we're headed. And with that, I will turn it over to the team. I don't usually do that, but I felt tonight with everyone here, that was worth stating.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Winkelman. Thank you, board, for this opportunity to talk about this important work you've been doing. I also want to thank all of the folks that are here tonight, and recognize all of the fine art supporters and those who care about education for students and the fine performing visual arts who are here tonight. If you're here for that, you know, say hi, wave to the board, let them know that you're here. Thank you all so much for coming as well to hear this information. As Dr. Winkelman said, we'll talk through a number of items, and we'll have that opportunity to talk more and then change up or revisit, explore other items as we go forward. Now, the game plan tonight is provide a little background about our, our fine art performing visual arts program is, you heard a little earlier during public comment, I think the auditorium's older than all of you. Imagine, you know, I can, I can remember sitting in my grandmother's lap when I was a kid. It was the most comfortable, most favorite place that I sat. My grandmother was probably, at the time, around the age of our current auditorium, but I guarantee you that those seats are not nearly as comfortable as her lap. And it's time for those to be considered for upgrade. Well, we'll talk a little bit about the background and how extensive we use the facilities that we have, the number of students that, that will, that will be there, do a little recap on the process, and we'll run through background information that we collected. We'll talk about some of the design concepts and funding options that are available. I want to point out that we had some folks that were really instrumental in developing this. While, while we've got Mr. McWilliams here, who's a part of that, a very important part of that, we've got Carrie Matlock from DLA and some of her supporting team members here with us tonight. We also have Bridget Tyleson, we've got Nicole Sotera, and others who have been really critical in working this project to try and get information for you, board. Well, just as a, as a reminder for everyone, empowering personal excellence in every learner Well, just as a reminder for everyone, empowering personal excellence in every learner is our mission. And part of that, as we think about our priorities, includes stewardship and how we support the world around us, the communities that we're in, and things that we engage in. And we had the strategic priority objective of specifically looking at our fine visual and performing arts facilities. And the idea was to create a plan, create some ideas and develop some funding options. And I'm excited to say that's what we're here for tonight. But as Dr. Winkelman said, this is not a one and done. This is, as we expect, an ongoing series of dialogues on this topic. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McWilliams to talk through the background. It's really more setting the scene, I suppose.
Setting the scene, so.
See how I did that?
That's great. So, you know, listening to public comment this evening, one of the things that kind of struck me is there's a lot of emphasis on fine and performing arts, obviously. But I think a piece that's missed is just the larger role that this facility plays in the building altogether. So you can see the numbers up there in terms of the students that are actually taking classes. But I would say throughout a student's career, they're in the auditorium multiple times. I think about all the opportunities for large school presentations and such that we would like to be able to facilitate in our fine and performing arts spaces because they're balanced, they're created for that, but there just isn't enough space to do that. And Ms. Tylston will talk quite a bit about how we actually have at times to move classes out of, say, the auditorium for a community presentation that's coming up, or if we want to have an all-school or a class advisory or something of that nature, we just don't have those spaces in there. So I think something that's key about this whole project as we think about it is to think about the big picture when we are looking at renovation at the high school and throughout the district. We're looking at multipurpose spaces and how these things, these spaces can be used across the board. And so when I look at the fine performing visual arts, I think about all of the possibilities that go along with this. And I'll give you an example from the last presentation. So we've been talking about having a welding program at the high school and looking at some possibilities of where that would fit. I think there's some real synergy between something like a welding program and a fine arts program, a studio arts program, where they may tap into some of those skills. So we can do this and this in these same spaces. So again, 290 days, I don't think captures everything. It's during those 290 days, how many minutes, how many hours are being used there and how are those things being used? So the way that the facility is designed as it is right now, it becomes pretty complicated to try to build around it. So those of you that are into musical season and the fall play and such, our fine skilled stagecraft folks build these stages out, and a lot of times they've got to move them around and work around a presentation that may be coming up. Maybe it's a community presentation, or we're not able to have that presentation because the stage or the facility won't function well with those pieces on there. So if we had a well-designed, well-thought-out system, we'd get much greater utilization of that space throughout. So I think it would be more than 290 days, and it would certainly be something that we would, you know, be able to offer more to the community. I would say there's a lot of turning away of things. And then finally, I look at instructional space and think about an example like woodworking, that woodworking space. We do offer those classes, we do create the stagecraft. But if you're in a design class, to have the opportunity to go into a space and use a space like a woodshop, or for some of our other teams, like our speech team, to be able to go into some of the facilities that are great for practicing, like our practice rooms. So when we think about these spaces, they're not just specifically for fine and performing arts. There are through lines throughout the high school and absolutely throughout the community. So I think about all of the power that we can get out of those opportunities and just really want to emphasize, this is more than just the fine art students, this is much bigger in terms of the high school and how it functions. So think about community utilization, you've all been to these things. Think about innovation showcase. And right now, because of the way that it's set up, we have to set up our innovation showcase in the hallway. If we can build these spaces out, we can actually do presentation spaces in there. Right now, currently, for large advisories, we don't really have a space that will hold the classes to be able to do those advisories. So we have to use the gymnasium, the acoustics aren't very good in there, and it's hard to hold students' attention in there. So I just look at those spaces as an opportunity. Try to sign a space out for a code meeting or a community meeting. There's definitely a need and there is a demand for that. So to be able to use that space more extensively would be great, you know, including our family, parent communications, and cultural events and such. And then essentially, we can build more community connections through that.
Thank you, Mr. McWilliams. Just as a little recap, board members, for what brings us here, back during the blueprint 220 process, one of the identified needs was fine arts, visual arts, performing arts space, and instruction. And during the referendum, there were funds that were allocated at that time to develop some conceptual designs that would allow the community to understand if we were going to make improvements to these spaces, rather than having it be just a red box on a piece of paper, it would actually provide more detail so that we all understood really what the need was and how it would be addressed. In following through on this objective, we retained the services of DLA to develop design options and to engage with us to really do all of this work. This started back in December of '22, and as we got into the beginning of '23, as you can see on the timeline, there were a lot of things that really happened during the first few months of the year, including practical things like, let's do an assessment and measurement of the spaces that we're talking about. Let's see them and get a good idea. Then tours of those spaces, workshops with staff, workshops with students, workshops with the community members. We had opportunity for acoustic analyses of our spaces. We toured other facilities at other school districts to get an idea about what they had, how they looked, how they worked. All of that was part of the baseline work that we did, and we'll talk more about that in just a moment. But following the collection of all that information, there was intensive process that DLA engaged in, and some of that was in conjunction with the district. We're not the architects, they are. They did a lot of work, and then they would check in with us in that process as they started to develop ideas, which culminated in several ideas that you'll see tonight that Carrie will talk through. And these were ideas that we vetted out through the process, as we looked at, how are these needs stacking up against potential solutions? And through that, we collectively decided some of these don't make a lot of sense. You know, for example, you know, one idea that had been talked about for a long time was just renovation of the auditorium. And that on its own is relatively expensive. Right now, we'd estimate that on its own to be about $10 million, just to do that work. But we also have an interest in having more seats. Now, if we do that renovation, we would actually have fewer seats because of requirements to make that space ADA accessible. And it would really meet very few of the other identified needs. So that was an idea that we thought made a lot of sense, but it's expensive and didn't really meet all the needs that we had. You're not going to see that as one of the options tonight, as a standalone option. But we considered a variety of things and ended up with three. Now ultimately, as we'll talk a little later, when we look at those three, none of those three may be exactly what you want to, you know, collectively galvanize around and say, yeah, that's the one, but it may be some elements or mixtures of those. Things that will come out of subsequent conversations that we'll have together to figure out, what do we really want to galvanize around for an idea? So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Carrie to talk through the baseline work and then actually get into the design options and tell you about what DLA has done.
Great, thank you. Well, we had quite a warm-up already with this, and it was a really great deep dive. I have to say, this was just the tip of the iceberg. What we saw tonight from your community support right here, we got that, all that, and much, much more throughout this process. And it began with your staff input. And this was a great process that we went through, pretty much a day immersion of talking with your staff to go through and really hit all of these departments and work to understand what's working, what we need help with, and what they see on a daily basis. And some of the highlights that we experienced and saw, as well as heard from them that day, and really, as we go through all of these different groups, you're going to see overlap, a great deal of it. And so they just say it in a different way and express it in a different way. But these are some of the highlights from what your staff wanted to see. Obviously, we gained a heck of a lot of information. This is just a smidgen, a smidgen of what we absorbed. And so really, shared spaces for visual arts, maker space, critique space, a little bit more, more space, customized space, theater, same thing, more space, bigger space. And I won't hit every one of these, but I will summarize them at the end. So we'll go through real quickly here. And the fine art students, their input, again, fascinating group to work with. I know my colleagues here had a great time talking to them. And what they wanted to see, again, just a summary, but in music, larger spaces overall, more ensemble spaces, music recording studio, theater, dance, additional dance, more real-world and career-focused spaces, a better auditorium, stage, and visual.
Dressing rooms.
Dressing rooms, big, big part, big part. And then certainly, for visual arts, larger and more open spaces, customized spaces, critique space, different types of tables and seating, more collaboration areas, and outdoor learning opportunities. The list goes on. And so really, that was very, I think this is a duplicate slide. That was just to throw me off? Okay, thank you. So test me. So we'll just do that again. All right.
You should be on for your final.
All right, final. So the community, the community night that we attended and facilitated on behalf of the district was an excellent experience, and we had so much participation. Really, a great group of people, obviously, and they had a lot to say. And so we did a number of activities and broke them into three groups and went through, and this is what the community wants to see, really welcoming entrance, ADA, big push, washroom space, more community spaces, better acoustics, versatility, wing space, green room, prop storage, visual arts, customized spaces, critique space, public access to the art gallery, and flexible learning spaces, natural light, project storage. They're really in touch with what is needed. And honestly, all of these groups overlapped. So it was easier to summarize them and put this all together and work with your administration to help get a prioritized list. And so you can see all of the topics that I've already mentioned, plus enhanced HVAC at the visual arts, different types of lab spaces, the theater, a green room, the size and shape of a stage, welcoming lobby and washrooms, sound and light locks. Very important facet of theater design is where, you know, you cannot interrupt what's the wonderful performance that's happening within the context of the theater. So you want to create a buffer space, which is like a vestibule, and so that is what they're talking about here. And ADA accessibility scene shop, separate from a production shop, music, a variety of practice rooms, sizes, larger ensemble spaces, music recording studio, larger music library, and black box riser and chair storage. And then shared spaces, obviously dressing rooms, rehearsal rooms, really more community hangout spaces, visitor parking and access, how the flow from the parking to those performance spaces is experienced, very important, and a larger dance studio and storage, music, larger band room. The band room is currently undersized, that was noted, and a lot of those spaces were. So again, HVAC enhancement throughout, soundproofing throughout, the list is pretty extensive, but it is a really great list and a lot for us to work with. So we started taking a look at design concepts. And before we start to look at those three options that we have selected for you, we'll talk a little bit about the area that we are looking at. Obviously, you're all very familiar with this, but if you're looking at an aerial view, you can really see the site constraints that are out there. Now, you've had some wonderful improvements over the course of the last summer or so of some parking lot extensions, which have created a nice staging area and stacking area for cars going out to Lake Cook. And so that's important to note because that's something that your civil engineer thought was really important to alleviate traffic. And it's also kind of our guideline of where we can stop with any of our expansion in the front of the building. And then obviously, you've got your parameters around the side and your buses parking and so forth. So we're pretty tight on this site. Although, like Dr. Bynan already mentioned, we did talk about options that possibly were not on this site. However, at this time, we chose to look at just these three that do exist here. But in any case, inside the building, these blue areas are the areas that we've discussed so far, that were all mentioned in those deep dives with your staff, your community, and your students. So you can see them highlighted, and that's really the extent of the fine arts. Now, you're going to see those over and over again in these next slides, so it's important to get familiar with that. So I know looking at floor plans is not everyone's thing, but hopefully, I'll walk you through, and if you listen to my words, it's easier than just looking at this because we're going to go pretty quickly, and it's a lot to absorb. I mean, we spent months looking at it, and now we're going to summarize it in a few minutes. So with our first option, really, this option, now the dark blue is, those are additions, and the light blue are renovations. So we're adding space with the dark blue, and with the light blue, we're just transforming space within the context of the building. Now, this one is just a renovation of the existing auditorium. And what that does is it, in order to correct all the ADA concerns and the acoustics and catwalks and do things that, and replace the seating, that auditorium gets smaller. So we lose seating. That's what happens in the renovation piece of this. But that is our first option.
There's more than just the renovation.
Correct. I'm going to explain that now. So what we'll also see is that those two additions, so we're taking the scene shop and separating that from the production shop or woodworking shop and opening that up and putting that so that the scene shop only exists in what currently is the woodworking shop. And we're creating a space for the production shop and a lobby space next to the existing auditorium, which really does something very nice. First of all, consolidates the visual arts, brings that closer together because they're currently very separated. And it also provides a larger lobby space and light locks for, and sound locks for the auditorium. We then, on the front of the building, create another addition, which relocates the band room and frees up some space for some dressing rooms and some other amenities, washrooms and so forth, and ensemble, practice rooms and so forth, on the front of the building. Now, in order to get into the building, you enter, the ADA parking would be in the front of the building, and you would enter it from the lower level, and there would be a lobby on this level, and then a multipurpose space or rehearsal area, which could also be utilized as a green room. That green room is not the same size as the stage, but it could function as it. And it's also remote in this location, so it's not directly under the stage, which typically green rooms are. So this one, you would walk in at the front entrance, just to the right of your existing front entrance, and go up an elevator up to the next floor, and then walk through the building to get to the theater. That's option one in a quick way. Option two is a little bit different. We are adding an auditorium in the front and repurposing the room within the context of the existing auditorium and regaining that space as band, choral, orchestra, and practice rooms and. and practice rooms. And then, we are doing the same idea with the production shop, and separating it from the scene shop, and putting it next to a larger, kind of a lobby space for that area, and pushing it back towards the visual arts. And a visual art improvement here, and I forgot to mention that in the other option, that the visual arts would all be renovated as well. They'd have new finishes in all of those rooms, and then, proper HVAC and furniture that would support the functions of those spaces. That's in every, in every option. Here, we're suggesting that there's also a courtyard, that's a possibility, that we refurbish that, and make it more of an outdoor space that the visual arts could utilize. Now, those, there's, there are still a few rooms adjacent to the other courtyard that could possibly have some extensions into that courtyard as well, and be accessible for outdoor learning as well. The, the auditorium is much larger in this one. It's nine hundred and some seats.
Ninety-six.
Ninety. It's an approximate. We can't get exact at this point, because it's not specifically designed, but it's, yes, it's in the nine hundred, so yes, nine sixty-nine. And this one has a stage, a larger stage, larger orchestra pit. It also has a balcony, which you will see in another one, and you'll also see a green room below, and a, a number of dressing rooms and other types of multifunctional rooms with an elevator, and you will then see a balcony up above. Option three. Option three really takes the existing auditorium and completely demos it, and recreates it in its exact spot. Only, this is a much larger auditorium, because it allows us to have a little bit more space back here, and so, I think that that is a little over twelve hundred in capacity. And we have a larger lobby space, still moving the wood shop, production shop, like we mentioned, and separating it from the scene shop, and giving a little bit more space to that scene shop, though, and a nicer kind of delivery area for wood and so forth. Then, we are still renovating all of the visual and performing arts spaces, visual arts spaces, and infilling the courtyard, that's just to the, the left of those spaces, and actually adding some new spaces on the perimeter of it. Now, when I say we're infilling it, the idea is to create it as an atrium space. So, it would actually be an interior space, not an exterior space at that point. And that could be very versatile, flexible, could be gallery space, could be more community space, and it would give a lot of flexi- flexibility to the visual arts. On the right hand of the, of the screen, you see another addition. So, really, in this one, we have three additions, a great deal of square footage by new, of new space. And what you'll see is a new band room, a new choral room on this level, and a bunch of practice rooms. And on the next level, you will see that there's a multipurpose room, and another of ensemble rooms and so forth, and there's a green room directly below the stage. And this is the entrance to the, the building, right in front, again, but you will traverse through the bill, through the building to get to the, the back of the auditorium, like you would before. Parking would be in the front. Unfortunately, there's really not a good way to provide parking to the back of the building adjacent to the auditorium in any of those. So, I know that was really quick, running through all three options. What's that, then, this is the balcony, yes, yep. So, I know that was really quick, running through three of them. But, let's talk, and we'll probably have a little bit more time to go through the differences between each as we look at option one, option two, option three, as we compare all of them together. So, this, referring to the shared spaces, you can see dressing rooms are, are taken care of in every single option, multipurpose green space, more community spaces, access to, you know, the parking lot, and how the, to the performing arts wing, and what that looks like. And then, the difference here from option one is that direct access to the auditorium doesn't really happen, but in option two, it does. This is means from the parking lot. This would be parking your car, and then you're really close to the front of the, the entrance to the auditorium. The option one and option three do not have that. They're a little bit more remote, although it still would be an ADA accessible route, because we are really transforming all of that space. As I mentioned, all that blue space would be new, it would be, this would take some, quite some time to construct, obviously, because it's going to be a little bit more of a, you know, a big process if you're gonna remodel all of that space. Dance, additional dressing rooms and additional rehearsal space. Larger dance studio and storage don't really come into play until option three, but they do, again, have additional rehearsal space and dressing rooms. I, I, I'm sure everyone saw the price on all of those, too. I can go through that. But, option one, the music, the difference here between option one and option two and three is that you're not having the larger choral room and storage room, and the black box riser and chair storage, but you would in option two and option three. But, all of these options certainly provide a great deal more than what music currently has. As you can see by the larger ensemble space, the music recording studio, larger choral room, orchestra room, and band room, and additional rehearsal space, and a larger music library. Theater, in option one, this, the green room is the, not the same size and same shape of the stage, but it is in option two and option three. The larger capacity auditorium does not exist in option one, it's smaller, we're actually going down. Which, and sometimes, when we're talking to clients, that is not necessarily a bad thing. Just, it is for performance purposes. They like to fill the house, and like to feel it really full, and so, it works out to the better, sometimes. Certainly, no, for the versatility that your district was looking for, they wanted a larger capacity, so that is why option three exists. You can see that option two is kind of middle of the road. A larger orchestra pit is in option two and option three. And larger, taller stage and more wing space in option two and option three, because we're starting over, and we're not renovating the existing space, so it gives us more flexibility. ADA accessibility happens in all, scene shop separated from production shop in all. The, the big difference between option one and option two is that the existing auditorium can remain open in option two only. And option three does not allow for that either. So, that is a big difference. So, we have to figure out some other place to house performances when this is under construction, if you were to choose option one or option three. So, the visual perform, the visual arts piece of this, they're really equal in option one and option two, except option three allows for a new digital photo lab, a new graphic design lab, new flexible mess lab, new galley space, and critique space, and gallery space, and the additional storage.
Well, that was a lot of information.
Yeah, it's exciting, though.
And just to, just to go back for a second on the prices that are here, and you'll see a range. These are, are estimates that are put together. Until final design is done on something, it's difficult to confirm exactly the cost. And timing also plays a role. There is inflation in, in construction, remodeling that happens. In fact, it's been pretty significant inflation over the last few years. So, you know, something that cost ten million dollars five years ago might be closer to thirteen, fourteen million right now, simply because of inflation. So, there, there's been a fair bit of inflation that has occurred. That being said, these are not cheap, as we look at those. And it's a reflection of the kind of work that needs to be done. I did ask DLA to provide estimates. I also asked that we use a third-party estimator to take a look at the designs, and also to try and vet that out, so we would have a good feel from an outside party as to what the, the cost would be. And these prices are reflective of all-in estimates. So, this is not just a construction cost number. Construction-only cost numbers look a lot smaller. So, we start to talk about that. You, you can't really compare perhaps, a five-year ago, a price of something that was really a construction-only cost with, what does it look like when we add in soft costs, furnitures, furnitures, fixtures, when we talk about architecture and engineering costs? So, there's, I mean, there's a lot of other things that come into this. So, Board, I want you to know that these are current estimates on all-in costs for these projects. So, let's talk about what the funding looks like. Well, the basic funding options that we, we think about could be current reserves, could be the current operating budget, could be donations, and could be borrowing. Those are usually the levers that we have in front of us to pull, to try and, and do these. And the borrowing, I've noted, they're, they're short-term, non-referendum borrowing. It's what we typically talk about as DCEB borrowing, or debt service extension-based borrowing. It's non-referendum borrowing. And then, there's also referendum borrowing. So, there's a couple different approaches under the borrowing area. Now, what I can tell you is that we do not have reserves in our operating funds, nor our capital projects fund, to be able to do a project of this magnitude on these options. Also, using the current operating budget to try and fund this would be very, very difficult, because we, we do not generate a fifty-million-dollar surplus on an annual basis to be able to throw at this, and to be able to pay off this project very quickly. Donations are a great, a great process and great experience. And then, there's a question of, if we look at donations, are they substantive donations that will go a long way for paying the cost of a project like this? Or are they donations that will provide enhancements to finish out, or maybe upgrade something that was in the original design? And it's, I, I sort of feel bad saying that what I think of as really generous and substantive donations might be six-figure donations. Those are huge, and a real sacrifice for families to be able to do that. Don't go very far, quite frankly, to funding this project. So, in order to do the project, donations in their totality would need to be much larger when we're looking at, at a cost in the forty to seventy-million-dollar range. So, the cost of these options exceed our internal funding ability. So, we start to look at what, what are borrowing options, then, to do this. And I've got some information, Board, just to provide you a little background. As we've, it's been a while since we've really talked about some of the borrowing issues, and we've got new board members that haven't been through that from the get-go. So, I want to start with debt capacity. And unit districts like ours cannot take on debt more than thirteen-point-eight percent of the equalized assessed value, or EAV. Now, that number changes, EAV changes from year to year, and what we have in existing debt changes. So, the ability for us to take on debt really varies, so these numbers look different each year. The current calculations are tentative, as we don't have final Cook County EAV numbers, so even as we look at some of these, they're preliminary, but they'll give you order of magnitude ideas. I'll also mention that a lot of the information here was developed in conjunction with our partners at PMA, who have assisted the district as its financial advisor relative to referendum borrowing in the past. And you will see, I will flash by one of their disclosure slides a little later in the presentation as well. But, the upshot here, a lot of numbers, I'm not gonna go through them all, but for our current fiscal year, we estimate our total debt capacity about two-hundred-and-eighty-eight million dollars. What that means is, we have ample debt capacity, even given outstanding borrowing, to be able to borrow to complete projects like are being contemplated tonight. Now, the, one of the options to borrow is through debt service extension base. So, this is non-referendum debt, and we are limited in our ability to support that debt by the debt service extension base. That is a number that was established back when the tax cap laws came into play, and it is the maximum amount of annual repayment the district, district could do on long-term debt. That, that DCEB right now is about two-point-five million dollars. When we take a look at what does that mean? Well, we have a policy, just want to remind you, we have a policy that says we're really interested in not using our DCEB line to be able to borrow for more than five years. If we were to do a five-year borrowing with DCEB, we'd be looking at being able to borrow about eleven-and-a-half million dollars. Now, if we did that, there would be no additional DCEB borrowing we would be able to do during that time, unless there is some increase in the DCEB limit. It does grow according to CPI, so I would anticipate some increase in that amount, but it would not be material to contribute to this. So, eleven-and-a-half million, when we're taking a look at projects in the forty to seventy-million-dollar range, isn't sufficient. So, really, what that takes us to is thinking about referendum debt. Now, this slide actually gives you an idea. It says referendum impact, but it's really borrowing impact. For every ten million dollars that are borrowing, that are borrowed, if we take a look at a home value of five-hundred-thousand dollars, that would be just over a forty-one-dollar-a-year impact for borrowing ten million dollars. If we were borrowing fifty million dollars, we'd multiply these numbers by five, and for a half-a-million-dollar home, we'd be looking at around a two-hundred-dollar annual impact in property taxes directly related to the borrowing. Now, that impact would take place after money was borrowed in the following tax year. I'll show you in some slides later when that tax impact actually would come about if we were to do a referendum that was approved by voters, and then subsequently borrow money. I do have a couple qualifications here on the side, just for your reference, so you had an idea about how these numbers were generated. Sometimes, a question comes up about the district's AAA bond rating, and what happens if we go out and we borrow additional debt? Will that affect our AAA status? Well, I've got some information here that would be indicative that it may not have a major impact on our, on our debt rating. Now, every time you issue debt, you have the opportunity to go out and have that individual debt that gets rated. And it's really the current borrowing that gets a particular rating. So, if we were to have an approved referendum and go out for forty, fifty, sixty, seventy million, whatever that number is, that debt would then get rated. Now, the overall debt percentage, overall net debt as a percent of market value is low. Our current number is two-and-a-half percent. And when we take a look at box in the top right, I know the print is a little small here on the screen, but the rating is below three percent, is still a low overall net debt percentage. That's how a rating agency would look at this. Every ten million dollars worth of debt adds eleven basis points on. So, if we were borrowing fifty million dollars, for example, that would add about point-five-five percent. That, if we're at two-and-a-half percent now, that would take us just above three into the moderate, would be the low, very low end of the moderate category for overall net debt as percent of market value. The overall net debt per capita is already high, it's in the high category. That is, in part by virtue of the fact that our area, our district is spread out over seventy-two square miles in northwest suburban area. We do not have the high concentration of population that some other school districts have, where they have more people in the same amount of space. So, we have slightly fewer people here. For every ten million, we add about two-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars onto that. So, if we're adding, for example, fifty million, you'd multiply the two-twenty-one by five, you get a little bit over a thousand dollars. We would still be in the high category, that doesn't change. Now, these couple parameters do, as we look at them, they include overlapping debt from other units of government that are in the area, that's part of what the rating agency looks at, is what is the overall burden that happens in an area? And these factors make up about twenty percent- make up about 20% of the overall rating. So one item might go up into the next category. The other one would stay in the same category. Again, this is a fifth of the overall rating. There are other components for our district that are rated very high. So the other components are economy, finances, and financial management assessment. We're rated strong, very strong, and extremely strong on those. So my assessment, when I look at this, is that there is some impact, but I do not suspect at this point in time that it would necessarily take us out of having a AAA rating, given the smaller portion of the overall rating that's affected by this borrowing and the very strong impact that the other categories have on our rating. Just to give you an idea about what this looks like, as you think about a referendum, if that were in the cards, Board, and you wanted to move forward, I've listed three upcoming dates for you. There are more as you go further into the future, but I listed the next three for you. There's one in March of '24, again, at the general election in November of '24, and then there's a consolidated election, spring of '25, April of '25. A referendum on either of the 2024 elections, if successful, wouldn't impact property tax bills until 2025. There'd be a process for us to then issue debt following a successful referendum. And based on the timing and how that works with the counties, it wouldn't actually impact tax bills until the following year. Now, sometimes homeowners or other property owners in the district have an experience where, as we did with this last referendum, where my tax bill changed after you approved the referendum, and you said that it was going to change by a certain dollar amount estimate. That was an average estimate, and it went up by more than that. And I remember having some conversations with property owners where we hadn't issued debt yet. So it absolutely was not because of the district issuing debt. It's really a function of how property taxes work, that they're related to property assessments. And when property assessments change, which township and county assessors do, not the school district, that can drive changes in individual homeowner tax bills. So when I'm providing estimates of tax impact for you, it's taking a look at an average on a big-picture level. It's not trying to predict what you would experience, board members, nor what any individual home would be. But it is an accurate estimate of what the impact would be overall. The assessment process and other aspects of the tax bill process do affect what an individual taxpayer would experience. In terms of timeline, I've got a slide for each of these. I'm not going to go through them all. They all look very similar, but they're here to give you an idea. But I will tell you that looking at the March '24 election might be challenging. It's a very aggressive timeline in order to make this happen. This would really be taking a look in October, that's this month, October of '23, and finalizing the scope, and then having referendum ballot language developed next month, in November, so that in December, Board, you were able to adopt a resolution to, in fact, place that referendum language on a ballot. Then, if there were a referendum committee that would be established by the community to run a campaign with the district, just providing information about why a referendum is happening and how that plays out, that would need to happen over the next few months, so that the community was well-informed on the matters leading to an election in March. This is an aggressive timetable and would require very quick getting to decisions about what the Board wanted to do. Perhaps a little more comfortable timing might be thinking about a November '24 election. Again, I've got the dates here. There's more time to be able to get to a decision if you wanted to ask a referendum question, Board. So it really would be next summer, July or August, almost a year from now, before you would need to be finalizing referendum ballot language and adopting a resolution to have a referendum question on the ballot. And then, of course, if we're talking about April of '25, it's really just like next spring's timeline, except a year later. So you certainly have much more time from that perspective. Here's the disclosure side I mentioned from PMA. And as we get to the end of the formal presentation for tonight, Board, I do want to talk about a couple next steps. So the first I've got listed here is getting feedback and having that discussion with you. I'm expecting that I'm going to stop talking in a minute, and that gives you an opportunity to start talking and ask questions. But I also imagine this will continue to take place as we roll forward in the future, that this was always thought of as the beginning conversation about some ideas that you may galvanize around. One of the things you've seen tonight, maybe there's some other version that's out there that you'd like to see, or some other way to think about, hey, we want to be at a particular price point, or we want to make sure that we've got particular features. Or perhaps we want to get a community input on the three options that are out there to really understand, do some community sessions, some town halls, to see, what does the community think about these ideas? And then revisit them and get some additional information, explore it. So there's all of that to come, is what we were imagining. Once you have selected an option, Board, part of our contract with DLA is that they will create an animation or a virtual walkthrough of the preferred design that also becomes something that the community can then see in another, in a different format, to get an idea about what could we do here, based on the option that was selected. Well, Board, a lot of stuff.
Wow.
Yeah.
I hope you appreciate the hard work that the teams have put in.
Absolutely.
Oh, appreciate it.
[applause]
Staff, DLA, community, a lot of hard work.
Lot of hard work.
Appreciate it.
Who wants to start with some questions?
I got a little list, but I want to make sure. I'll check off my list if people raise the same questions. Does anybody want to start?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, everybody who's here. Sorry, it's at the end of the agenda. I know students have homework and things going on. So...
And tune in at home.
Tune in, yes, and keep sending emails with what you think, because we need input. So a couple of things that jumped out at me. To me, it makes sense to put the auditorium in the front of the building, where there's accessibility and parking and a separate entrance. I think safety and security was important in the prior referendum, and putting a lot of special things in to make that happen and be a focus for the community, and especially if we're going to have this as a community event place, it's got to have accessibility at the back of the building, semi-parking, as everybody in the room knows, right, to get in there. It could be possible to have a separate entrance on the back, but it doesn't seem ideal. It doesn't meet a lot of the goals of having a gallery in it, accessible to the public, a lobby accessible to the public, scene and set accessible to the outdoors to it. However, and also the art gallery being in a little island way at the other end of the building, kind of like we've put all of the, you know, special services for students in one place, right, so that people aren't wandering through the whole building. It would be helpful to understand better how you would get from the front of the building into the theater if it's in the back. I also think there's been a lot of input that we don't want to downsize and have less seats. So I think people will agree that that's not a good choice to downsize by renovating. So my biggest questions are, can we put the larger 1,200-person one in the front of the building and build, put it on top of things and move it back? I kind of made a little cutout and have been moving it around on the map, you know, like this, to say, could it fit in the driveway? Could it protrude into the grass in the front yard? I kind of looked as I came up today. Could we go two stories, like put this one in the front and then make more space by behind it, putting two stories, so we don't encroach into the classrooms that are behind the art courtyard that we have now? Because number three takes away classrooms from other classes in the building. Am I talking too fast? There's a lot. Okay, so I'm obsessed with this, right? A lot of you know that. So those are my questions to start with.
So the auditorium that we're showing in front of the building is probably the maximum size that we can get, given the fact that, of that constraint that I talked about with the roadway and the stacking of cars going to Lake Cook. Your civil engineer really doesn't want us to move that road pass. So if you're talking about in that little nook between the entrance and the, that existing, in the existing building that we're showing in option two, I assume the question means that you would like to increase that option two to a 1,200 capacity. And that's going to be very difficult to provide based upon the limitations that we have there with that road.
Could you take the practice classrooms off? Take the lobby off? Because the lobby becomes the atrium, and then it's smaller.
I think we actually looked at otter-shaped performance spaces with our theater consultants as well, and...
Is that accurate, Rich? Is there...
Yeah, it's really just about as big as it can go. The one thing to point out as well, if you looked at the one option, that L-shaped piece, we were trying to be conscious, that was the 2000. That was done in 2000. If you look at, yes, that light blue L-shaped piece, that was all from 2000. So we were trying to be conscious of keeping that, since it's the nicest and newest part of the building as well. So it's kind of fitting just what will fit in that area. Certainly, another hybrid option could be impeding into that. That might be a solution. They would just be taking part of the newer part.
Building down. Removing part of the building down to, in order to...
May I repeat that, so I make sure that everybody understands that? So that L-shaped piece...
Does anybody have a pointer to help us know? Like a pen? Do you want a pen?
So you're trying to, in all, I see it here, in all the options, the L is preserved. It's easiest to see on option three, I think. You show option three, I think it's...
This section here, they're referring to as the newer section that's right here. This is option two that shows that medium-sized auditorium here. And so, Carrie, I think the question is, well, if you didn't care about preserving that, then what? What does that do? Does that change the story?
And yes, if we took down a portion of the building, we could do that.
Dave, could you point out where the atrium is, too? It was really confusing until I looked at it for a long time to know where the new atrium is on the drawing, just to help people out.
That was really in option three, not in...
Oh, it's not on there.
Not option two.
It's not the gray area?
It is. That is just...
I think she's asking about the existing atrium.
The existing atrium.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's under construction right now.
Okay.
It's the gray part, right?
It's right there.
It's right there. Okay. Just to help people. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Point of clarification for the team. When Dr. Bynes is referring to the medium option, it's actually an enhancement by over 250 seats from what we have today. Medium in relation to option one and option three. I just want to clarify that. Yep. If I'm mistaken with those figures, I'm just looking at the sheets in front of me. I think that's...
Just for information, what is our current auditorium's capacity at the current time?
Seven fifty.
About seven fifty. Okay.
Was there another, was there another one that we missed in there?
Carrie, I know you said that this is obviously a multi-year project for any three of these options. Can you give us a better idea, obviously estimate, but how long, how many years are we talking for each option roughly with regard to construction? I'm just thinking in terms of...
I would say that this is, like I said, a multi-year project, which means that we would need two summers of construction plus a full year in construction, you know, between that as well. So there'd be ongoing construction, as you're experiencing currently, right? When you have students in the building, the additions would be being built at that same time. So...
Specifically, option three, how long will we be without an auditorium?
Oh, wow.
Would that be two years?
We need to study those timelines. And that's a quite extensive demolition and addition, so...
So we're looking at about a year and a half, at least, just for the construction, right?
I would say two years, minimum.
Two years for each option.
Minimum.
Okay, great. And what about, how much would our annual maintenance and operating costs increase in addition to, roughly? Do we know? Like, have an estimate?
No.
We've not created an estimate on what that would be. There's certainly, I can tell you that there are, with new spaces, there are additional utility costs that are involved. There's also a need for additional custodial help to be able to clean those spaces. The size of these additions, we may also need additional maintenance support to be able to do that. So there are some fixed costs that would happen. And then, of course, the variable costs depend on other things. And we haven't estimated out utility cost increases with this, but there would be some.
Great. And Steve, maybe you can answer this. But, you know, this is super exciting in terms of, you know, what we need and what we could offer our students. I'm just wondering how you would answer the skeptics out there who might have referendum fatigue and are like, oh, we didn't pass it the first time, you know, when it was included. Why should we, why should we, as a community, fund it again? Just, you know, give us your reasoning. Give us some, you know, talking points when the community engages with us, like, I don't want to pay more taxes, you know, things like that.
So I think I'm going to start on the most basic level, and it's accessibility for our students. Many of you have toured the current auditorium. It lacks accessibility. It's not universally designed. So if you're a student with mobility issues or a guest with mobility issues, it doesn't function well for that at all. You've heard many of the speakers in the back that have been part of the Fine and Performing Arts program. Some have experienced as even contractors or helpers within the space. Our electrical limitations and just the functionality of the current auditorium means that we're not able to do things. There is literally not enough power in there to do the kind of lighting and to do the kind of productions that our students want to do. So they do the best that they can. We've got some very talented students and staff members that make that work for them. Just in terms of functionality of the space, too, it would be nice. It would be, I think it's probably a high school standard to have an auditorium that will comfortably hold at least one of your graduating classes. We're not in that situation right now. One of the things that you'll see on this list is furniture. The furniture in the spaces, particularly in the fine arts spaces, that is furniture that was retrieved from the old science classrooms and reused in those spaces. It's not furniture that was meant for an art classroom. It's literally the furniture that Dr. Winkleman and I taught biology at when we were first teachers in District 220, and it hasn't really been fixed at all. Those were old science classrooms. They weren't adapted very much at all. And I think it's a different time, and we've mentioned this through a lot of our spaces that we've done renovations on, that there was a lot of kind of, I would say, even shortsightedness in terms of creating spaces in the past. And we get a little bit landlocked. We get a little bit tied into the visual spaces, the visual art spaces, where they're not real adaptable at all. So we can't adjust to an advancing jewelry program, where, you know, it'd be nice to be able to bring, as I mentioned before, a welding program. And those spaces don't adjust easily. And so that's one piece. And I think about an experience that I had. It was one of the musicals. As some of you know, I try to get involved in some of the performing arts, particularly the musical. And I just, I don't know, I just got the whim that I was going to go up and run a spotlight. And I'm not a small man. So I went up into the catwalks to try and run a spotlight with the students. And it's not anywhere near accessible. I would say it's borderline unsafe. I think about an experience with a student who had a disorder, a seizure disorder, and wanted to be part of that and couldn't be part of that because, I mean, it just isn't safe. There's no way to get up and down if a student has an issue up there. And that's just a story, just one story. So does that answer your question? I mean, it's, our staff, our students do a tremendous job trying to make those spaces work as best as they can. But it's, it's time. But but it's it's time. It's time for that space.
Thank you. I have more, but.
Well, I guess I don't necessarily have a question as much as more for you guys as much as more for me for Dr. Winkelman.
So the next step is to help us kind of establish the preferred design. I presume that we're going to have community input on that preferred design. Do we, in the absence of having selected when we want this to go to referendum, or assuming that we do, I guess, do we have a timeline put in place for how we're going to put this committee together?
So, yeah, I think there's going to be, and that's why I was alluding at the very beginning. This is the start of several conversations. I would anticipate that we're going to continue conversations like already happening right now about just really trying to understand the different features and the preliminary plans that you see in front of you and and how they meet certain needs or not based on the different options and continue to really dig in and refine where we think from a design observer going to head. I think once we have that, Steve, what we would need to do then is say, okay, this is the board's thinking, the administration's thinking, in what ways do we want to further engage the community on this topic once we kind of narrow down a little bit or, as Dr. Bye mentioned, kind of galvanize around a particular direction for this? And then have some conversations at at the table here. How do we want to engage? Do we want to do surveys? Do we want to do focus groups? Do we want to have town halls? Do we want to set up a separate, community-based committee that would be given a certain charge with certain parameters and a certain membership and then bring recommendations back to the board? There's a lot of things that we can do, and I think that would be a subsequent conversation where we would really talk about just that. Where do we want to head next to make sure we're getting more input and feedback along the way?
Okay.
So, I mean, on that topic, do we think we could, as soon as our next meeting, start to have a have a discussion item just on community engagement on this? At least have a start initial conversation?
I think we could.
Because I think.
I want to make sure we get through all of, I mean, I have.
Well, do we want to do the walkthrough of the preferred design for us before we start? Or do we want to present all three ideas, or do we want to narrow it down, I guess?
I think there might be four. There might be all our ideas.
There might be five.
Yeah, or five.
Sure, there might be many.
Right. And that's where I was kind of saying, I think it would be logical for the board to get some of the initial, I mean, the first time I saw this presentation, I had 20 questions myself, and I know you all do as well. And I think between now and the next meeting, tonight's an opportunity to ask questions, but you may think of some other things over the next few days as you reflect, go back to the plans. I think continue to share that with us. We'll continue to provide feedback and answers on those questions. And then certainly, starting next meeting, if we start to feel like we're getting a sense, that could be a topic of the next presentation we put together of, here's some things for the board to consider, of ways to engage the community as well as ideas or concepts that the board may have that they would like the administration to pursue.
Sure. And then I guess, you know, the other thing that I thought about too, and we discussed this briefly, is, you know, if we're going to go to this trouble of putting together referendum, are there other elements that this board would want to have included and bring forth to the community for their consideration? I don't know if there are, but if there's things on the administrative docket that we want to address that we're not necessarily able to do from operating, I think this is probably the time.
Yeah. I'll give you a real practical example, just at our last meeting, we did have some options about kindergarten. And we talked about potentially additions to some of our schools. That could be something that I think is one of our priority areas.
Yep.
And top of mind, and certainly others. So that could be, you know, further refinement on the designs. How do we want to gather more feedback and input in community engagement? And then also, okay, if we are contemplating a referendum, what other areas might be part of that question that we would pose to the community?
So is that something that the administration can kind of put together for us to hear your proposals as to what you think would be reasonable or like preferred, and then we can react to that?
And feedback from the board of.
Sure.
Items that you maybe want us to consider and bring to the table as well.
I mean, I had a question on that topic, which was, there was a couple of things we didn't get to do with the high school with the current referendum. We had to forego the STEM space, the maker space that we were planning on. We had to forego the cafeteria upgrades, right? And I'm not sure if those are still priorities that the administration would would want us to consider, but those were a couple of things just off the top of my head we did not get to do because we ran out of funds.
And the multipurpose PE space.
The indoor turf.
The indoor turf.
That was another area.
Just to be, just to be clear, was the servery upgrades.
Yes.
So the cafeteria itself, the seating area is being upgraded.
Yes, sorry, yes.
I just want to make sure I.
The servery, thank you.
The servery.
But those are other examples.
But those are things that we had in.
Things we may want to capture that between bid one and bid two, that we did have to make some decisions. And that really speaks to where Dr. Byne was talking about, you know, estimates versus when you get to the point when you're actually then going out to bid. Sometimes your estimates, you're working within, sometimes you're not. And those were some hard decisions we had to make.
Right.
To be able to deliver, but also be mindful we couldn't do it all.
Right. And I know the servery couldn't, doesn't touch this space, but maybe there's opportunity. I know the science rooms are in the other part of the building, but if there's any way to, I don't know, capture that in there, I would be interested in hearing about that space as well.
Maybe I didn't ask clearly before, but when we visited Argon, it was a very small footprint and a lot of, lot of things in that small footprint, and it was multi-level. And so I'm wondering if in our very small footprint or not flexible footprint that we have, if we could go multiple level and put things there, because I see in one of the plans, we're taking some classrooms and making them fine arts that weren't before. And there's some things that we would like to have all in this area so that the things that belong together are in the same area. And did you look into, did that come up as a possibility of doing something that way?
Am I being clear enough?
I don't.
You don't?
You don't want.
I don't understand what classrooms we overtook that we did that.
So in this picture over here, some, these were not fine arts before, were they? In option three, those are not. There's something else. I'm not sure what they are, but they're not fine arts now.
Or social studies classrooms in these.
Right.
Okay.
So so then, and when we were in Argon, there was, you know.
It's Argo.
Argo, I'm sorry. It was, you know, there was a, I remember band, there was choir, there were less students, but it felt like a bigger space than what we have in some respects. And so I'm wondering if if going up would help us with our space issues.
With all the additions, or at least the the right side of this, all those additions are multi-story, two or three levels in all its options.
In the dark blue.
The dark blue, yes.
But could the light blue be as well, I guess is what I'm saying, because that's that's our footprint.
Since that's exist, we have to look, since it's existing.
Not if it's existing. We'd have to demo it and make it a new, a new piece. We can't go by.
It's more expensive.
Again, that L piece, it's easy, really easy to see on option three, is, the idea was to preserve that.
Correct.
But if we could consider.
Change the usage, but keep it.
I guess I'm just trying to keep it in that spot, because then the next question is, if that spot's too little, do we think about a different location for the whole thing? And did you think about that? And what was the answer of that?
Yeah, we did.
Because if it doesn't work here, you know.
We actually, one of the places we thought about is where we're sitting right now.
Okay.
We thought about this space the district owns.
Not at this moment.
I had to get a little dramatic.
Not at this moment, just this location.
Hey, we can meet somewhere else.
We also thought about.
I'd be fine with that.
Property the district owns on Kelsey Road. So and and there may be other spaces as well, but even a space here, which is very close, as we talked about that option and looked at what could we do for a performing arts center in this space, we started to look at at some of the pros and cons of that. One of the pros is that we can get more space. It's all new construction, so we really have a lot of flexibility around the design. One of the cons is that we start to run into challenges with student access into the space. So as soon as you get off of an adjacent piece of the high school, we start to talk about how students use the space in moving classrooms, having that interdisciplinary opportunity to engage in the space, it becomes more difficult. And of Mr. Williams, there are other concerns that you might bring up that I missed on that, but we did have conversations administratively with DLA about those and ruled those out as being less viable and practical in meeting our needs than what we have.
So just, there are schools, high schools with separate campuses, I think of Homewood-Flossmore High School, has two separate buildings, and the students actually have to walk, I'm not sure how far it is, but they have to walk to get to the other building. And, you know, there are a number of of issues that come along with that, as you might imagine. So, I mean, we want to utilize the space. You build the space, we want to be in it all the time. That's why we do it. So, you know, to navigate the roads and, you know, the parking and all of that as well, but that's that's secondary to student safety and student access during the school day. Lake Hook Road is the road in Barrington, right? So navigating that is not easy. Build a bridge, not a simple solution, right?
You definitely lose the flexibility that you would have if it was attached to the building, so.
So my other question, one of my other ones is, okay, if the auditorium is in the back, like on the picture up on the screen, can you explain better how you would get there from the front parking lot? Because people in the room are very familiar with how it is now and people listening at home that are that are paying attention, but it's it's hard to look at the picture and understand the ups and downs.
Go one more. So this is the upper level. So this is your new kind of being built right now, right? So that is on the lower level, kind of where the current main entrance is over here. So this is the lower level, so kind of near right next to that, just like an extension of what's being built right now would be another lobby. You go in on that same level at the parking lot, and then you go up elevator or stair, and then you go up back one side. So this would be a two-story lobby.
So that'd be an atrium-like?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you come in the ground level, go up elevator stair, and come through here.
What's in there?
Come through a hallway to the lot. So it's, you know, not whatever that.
That's less than half the distance today that you have to walk.
Yeah, instead of going around, you still have a way in there, it could be doors locking off the rest of the building, but, you know, you just have to go up a level and come through a core or to another lot. So you have a way through the building, wouldn't have to go around, but it's just less direct.
It's still an accessibility issue. I really like having the auditorium in the front. Right, you know, it's a shorter distance and it's right by the parking and.
One is a rental option for another organization, they're coming kind of through the building, right? As far as safety and security, it's it's not, it's not ideal. There's, so there's no option of, it doesn't make sense to have an out the back like we do now, there wouldn't be any accessibility in the back for the public.
There certainly would be doors in the back, but and and that could be an entrance for, if you were to rent that facility, and we could block it off with with doors and throughout the the rest of it.
But there's just still not parking. Unless you take the buses away, right?
Unless you remove the busing.
Unless you take the buses and you have to.
Even that's still not a lot of parking. It's great for, you know, the handicapped and the disabled and, you know, the limited mobility, but.
It is a lot better, just for perspective, it's a lot better than what you have to walk in to get to the auditorium today.
Currently.
Currently.
True.
It's much improved, even though it might not be ideal, it's still much improved. I just want to point that out. I'm trying to keep my my mind open and think bold. Where's Paul?
Please keep in mind too that our current design, we're trying to keep traffic off of the back road because we've got the physical education complex that's on the other end with with a lot of student traffic in that roadway. So, you know, that was something that we saw in the last design, so just kind of keep that in mind as well.
Sir, sorry, is there any other way to put the art gallery close to the to the performing arts center, out of the box thinking? Because the art gallery is never near it in any of them, I don't think. And that's a public area as well? Did you guys come up with some other options to put that closer that might work?
I'm certain we could probably manipulate some space within the context of those, in this particular one and in the addition, or in the other one and the in the adjacent space and see what we can do to do that.
Yeah, we also hope to use any of the potential lobby spaces as art galleries as well. It may not be labeled that way, but that would be hoped as well. Any public space has art galleries.
A lot, some of the auditoriums that we've done in the past have hidden, made the actual lobby the art gallery as well of the auditorium.
And just to make sure I understand, every lobby area in all three of them has bathrooms that are just for the area? Okay. Because they're not all, you know.
Yeah, there's a lot of them, I was going to ask that. You know, I'm really queuing in on the second option, and I don't see in the lobby where there's bathrooms on the main floor, so I just, is, is it, I mean, if it's not written, it's just assumed that there is, it's going to be there? I'm talking about option two.
On two, there would be.
On the main floor.
Yeah, there.
On the main lobby.
Either on the lower level underneath or.
The lower level, I see where the players are, but how about.
Back, so they'd be back right kind of where they are, but it stands, it's right now they're about a third of that size, or kind of down around the hall.
Oh, so it's not in the lobby, though?
No.
Okay.
And this could probably be flipped as well.
It's important to understand that these drawings are highly conceptual.
Yeah, I'm just asking.
So what we're doing is allocating space and 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 really, you know, there's not, exit doors aren't shown and so forth, so it's, but certainly good discussion points, and we can, we can certainly tweak that to make that a little bit more adjacent to that lot.
Another question about option two, as long as I was talking, when we were at Lake Zurich, one of their complaints was during a show, they have trouble getting from stage right to stage left. And with this option, is, I assume we're going to have that same issue, right? If somebody's, you know, on one side of the stage during the play, they're not going to be able to get, is there going to be a back area or?
We have the basement, though, to manipulate.
Oh, so they would go down and around? Okay. Okay, that's.
Peanut gallery has spoken.
So another question, we didn't visit one like this, but I've been in theaters and maybe they're old and outdated, I don't know, but like Palatine or Rozelle, where you've got a middle section, you've got two side sections, and I think you can divide it, so you could have three lectures going at once. Did we, did we think about anything like that? Because some of these space issues, we want to have more classroom, educational, multi-use, and if you could divide it, then you can have more things going on at once in there and have a lot more use. Because I know that, you know, we said our 200 and some days it's used, but we didn't say how many times a day it's used and how quick the switch over is and, you know, the opportunities that we say no to. Because I think there's, there's, people don't even ask that they know it's overbooked and not available.
We certainly discussed that internally, and there are some precedents with that, but we did not, we did not look at that for these options. And the reason being is really that it's typically not, not done as a lecture hall, it's done as more performance spaces. It's not to say that it can't. Certainly not to say that it can't, but that's, that's not really what we're seeing in in designs of of high school auditoriums. However, you know, there are manipulating walls in in professional level auditoriums that are certainly out, that certainly exist. I would say that that's quite more expensive than than what we would be illustrating here today.
Well, because I think that's something that'll appeal to the community, that it's going to help every student, and every student in high school will use that space more if we can make it more usable. And then every child in the district eventually will get to high school, unless they move, and will have the opportunity to use that. And so it makes it more sellable to the community and more palatable, I think.
Steve, do you see that need?
Well, I heard Steve talk about that. You already spoke to that a little bit.
So so I think the the key piece to this is having the the preparation spaces. So Bridget and Amy will say, and I've seen it firsthand, where they've got to set the stage up, they don't, first of all, the stage doesn't allow for large pieces to be moved in and out because the doors don't exist. We don't have fly space, we don't have a ton of drop space. So it doesn't allow, it doesn't function to a point where you can kind of set things aside for a school day to be able to do a presentation or for an evening. So, once the auditorium's set up for the musical and they're in, leading up to their week of musical, that space is kind of off limits. And, you know, just in looking at the designs, you know, emphasizing having green rooms, having another stage downstairs that kind of mimics the stage that's upstairs so that they can do their practices. Having more dance studios and having more spaces for those athletes and performers to be able to use will free up that space, because a lot of times the stage is being used for that as well. So, all of these secondary spaces that are in, building out, provide that flexibility that we could get small, medium, larger-sized groups into these spaces to be able to use them. Not always, not every time do you have to use a 600 or 700-seat auditorium. Sometimes we just need something that's, you know, 100 seats. And there's plenty of spaces around that that would kind of fit into that, or 50 seats. It's bigger than a classroom, but it's not quite the size of an auditorium, right? So, I see a lot of flexibility within the spaces, you know. Band's probably not a good example, but you think about a choir space, it's got risers, it's got seats, it's set up, and that could be used for more than just choir practice. That could be a place for an evening presentation. It's seats, it's on risers, we can think about things a little bit differently than what we do now. We don't have to label them and say, this is that space. And again, just kind of echoing what we've talked about across the board, we don't call it the lacrosse field out front. It is a multipurpose field that a ton of different student athletes use and our band uses and so on and so forth. So throughout the building, I think if we keep that lens, we can accommodate a lot of different needs.
So you talked about the use of your auditorium. Currently, do we do much with the black box? Do you use it during the day a lot for, you know, classes or presentations or?
All the time, all the time. It's used for classes on a daily basis, auditorium on a daily basis, absolutely.
On that same note, in the presentation, I think it said 290 days? I recall from prior conversations that the auditorium even itself has usually been more than that, over 300 and something days a year. Did something happen that we decreased the usage or?
I think it all boils down to how you describe usage.
Okay.
So, some of those days, it's not as though people are sitting in the seats all 365 days, but there's probably something going on in that auditorium every single school day. Most weekends, throughout the summer, there's rentals. I'm trying to think, we probably force some off time just to clean it for the week between summer school and when band camp starts to kick off and we get back to school. I mean, it's forced, there might be some downtime during the holiday season, end of December, beginning of January, but that's about it. It's, and again, it doesn't mean that we're bringing in a full house of patrons and viewers, but that stage sometimes is our dance studio or a build-on to our dance studio. Not to mention the rentals, I'm just talking about the students at Barrington High School, not including the community. So, easily, easily over that 290, those are probably just the signed-out published days.
So can I just ask, do we have a schedule that indicates how many days we're actually running it out and what kind of revenue we're generating with that today? Because I would think, I mean, you know, Ms. Delsham pointed this out and I agree, we could certainly utilize it to, you know, offset some costs, but we couldn't, we can't count the days we're already running it out. And that would, what we would need to factor in is anything incremental relative to what we're already doing. Is there opportunities for that?
Yeah, I'm sure we could go back and look and see the rental agreements and determine, you know, what the cost is. And, you know, our rental agreements, there are some pretty specific fee structures to them. I don't have it right at the top of mind, you know, Dr. Byrne could probably provide that. But we go all the way from, you know, just basically covering the costs of custodian, electricity, utilities for school-sponsored events and those types of things, where they're really focused on our students and up from there. So we'd have to just give you a breakdown of what that rental agreement, and that applies to all of our spaces. So there's different tiers that go along with it, we could certainly pull the data on that.
Perfect, perfect.
What we've also heard from other school districts is that while new space will generate an interest and may attract people interested in renting it, may allow you to be able to charge more, it typically is not enough that's going to pay for your space. And even as one of our speakers earlier today commented, if we were generating low-six-figure revenue from that, that is not sufficient to be able to cover the cost of the auditorium based on these numbers. By the time we pay it off, we would have already had to have replaced it again. So it's, but can that help offset our costs of operating? Which goes back to the question here that we were talking about, perhaps. But it's hard to tell exactly what that market will be.
Do we have any contracts right now that are going to extend into, beyond a certain point in time? So what I'm thinking is, if we have a, and I'm sorry, this is something I literally chomped in my head, if we have improved spaces, we incur improved revenue opportunities. Meaning, you know, we might rent at this rate today, but to your point, down the road, we might be able to rent out or lease out at a much greater rate.
Yeah, I'm not able to answer that question today if we have long-term locked-in pricing with anyone. My suspicion however is that the time that it would take to both finish the conversations that we'll need to have around the space, get the funding and then construct the space is probably more than sufficient to be able to ensure that we were able to make changes as we would roll forward.
Perfect, perfect.
I want to go back to something, I think you kind of said this already, but as you're building out the plans, and I'm not great with layouts, I'm 2D challenged. But are you thinking about some of these additional spaces outside the auditorium being kind of flexible so that you could get more utilization out of them versus kind of, like if there's a way to meet the needs of, I'm looking at option two because I kind of like it around front two, but there are some things that are still grayed out versus option three, but is there a way to make some of these spaces flexible so maybe you can capture some of the other needs that people are looking at? Just kind of thinking about it a little bit broadly, so it's, maybe you might get more utilization from students out of that too?
I think those spaces are very flexible and there's more of them. And they are intended to be more flexible, for sure. That is it. I think you mentioned earlier that nothing's really needing to be labeled, certain rooms for only. There were many multipurpose rooms labeled in here and, you know, rehearsal areas and so forth. That was the intention of, as much as we could possibly provide.
So.
So what do we need to, I mean, do we have like?
That's where I was going, not ahead next, so. First, great, great feedback, wonderful discussion. I have a lot of notes written down. I'm sure our team has a lot of thoughts that are now generated and they're, you know, kind of thinking through as far as things that we pointed out that we'll take back, get our arms around, have some updated information regarding designs, right? I guess I'm hearing, and maybe I'm all, I'm wrong on this, but I'm hearing some interest in two and three. I have not heard a lot of questions or interest in one. Is there thinking of the board that maybe we want to spend a little bit more time in one or more of the options, eliminate an option, is it still, how do we want to navigate? And that's just what I've heard tonight, yeah.
If we are able to make a decision to narrow down, that might be helpful. But if we don't feel, we feel too much pressure, then I'd say we could start with that at our next meeting. So, again, I heard the same thing, and one of my questions is, are we ready to say we don't want to downsize the auditorium?
Yes, I think we do, I think we agree.
Agreed.
We don't want to downsize.
Yeah, so for me, option one was a non-starter, because I feel like we cannot decrease the capacity of the auditorium.
Okay.
I'm not trying to put pressure, I just want to make sure, it looks like everybody's agreed that we, that that is true.
That's an almost 300-seat reduction too, if we go with one, that's significant.
Yep, yes.
Everybody agreed, sounds like so. Are we all okay, and again, if we don't want to decide right now, that we're okay to look at the options that, where it's not a standalone, we're going to put it where in this space that we've been talking about right now? Is there anybody that still wants to consider looking at a standalone? Well, if you're not ready, that's okay.
I'm not sure we want to close the door.
I'm not ready.
Okay, okay, that's fair. All feedback, I think, good for you. And then I heard a lot of, I like the front, I like it in the front, I like it in the front. Again, I don't think we have to close the door, but I like the front as well. But I like the idea of making it bigger.
I'm with you, Sandra, I'm with you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, 969 is not bad.
Make some magic happen.
969 is not bad.
There's still 200 seats up.
But there's still, we need to look at some of the details, like that you pointed out, we've got to be able to. I'm worried about having to go downstairs to get from stage left to stage right, that's huge.
I have to say, I'm also concerned about losing another 20 for two years.
I am also concerned about that.
Well, have other schools done that? What have they done?
I'm sure they have.
I mean, there's got to be a way to do it, other people have done it.
Well, it's typically, we try to avoid it, so that they don't have to.
Okay, well, we're not typical.
I'm not going to do this to scare you, but I can talk to you about 20 years ago, when there was some renovation done in the auditorium, so when they built that out around the old auditorium there, and they put in the air conditioning, that had to be closed for one season. So, basically one school year. And imagine this, the musical being done in the multipurpose room that most of us know as the wrestling gym. So that was where the musical was held. So, I remember seeing it sat right next to Joe Sanchez. Can't remember what the show was, but that's where it was.
Because I remember one year, everything was closed off and it was like Brigadoon, I think, and we had to go through like tunnels to get there, but we actually got into the auditorium. We just had to go, because we couldn't access around the auditorium, so. But they actually had a year where they didn't even do it in the auditorium, huh?
I did Brigadoon in high school.
Actually, Ridgewood, which we toured, really, they had like two walls remaining of the existing auditorium, so they did take it out of commission, it was about a year and a half, so.
I think our finance people are so creative, they could help us figure this out. They're amazing and resourceful.
Okay, so.
So, two weeks, we talk about community input for sure, right?
Potential additional projects.
Potential additional projects.
I guess I would also ask the board, you know, the team is going to go back and have time to reflect on lobby space. How do we use that flexibly? Maybe where some things are located, the art gallery was brought up, I've got a list of things. We'll bring some of those concepts back, concentrating on options two and three for right now as we're looking at those pieces of how we may. I guess I would also ask the board if you can take some time over the next few days to just continue to, like I said, you know, take your time, look at this, see if there's any other information, and if you could get that to us, take the next few days and the weekend, but if, you know, by first thing Monday morning, within that timeframe, if there's any additional pieces that you would want, because I then want to be able to take that, have the team work on some of those, any additional thoughts or pieces so that that can be brought to the table for some design considerations, would that be fair? Take a few days, reflect, but by first thing Monday morning, at the latest, you can send it early, we'll take early thoughts, but no later than Monday.
Or 9:00 AM.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Can I ask one more?
I think that'll be helpful as well. Yeah, go ahead, Leah.
Just in the think big, think future, is it possible to do the pros and cons of the partitions to make it, you know?
You mean to divide the space?
To divide the space, to be able to make it, to divide the space and use it differently.
Sure, okay.
The auditoriums?
Yeah.
And I'll just say, you know, everybody knows how to get ahold of us, so if people that were listening, you know, had ideas that they think that we ought to be considering before 9:00 AM on Monday morning, feel free, I hope that's okay, everybody, but feel free to reach out to us. Our emails are right on the, are right on the website, so, don't be shy.
One more thought that just came to mind as we were talking as well. Do we need a separate committee or a separate group or employees to help with fundraising? We had mentioned that as an option, and I do kind of like that idea. I bet you there'd be plenty of folks in town who would be willing to contribute and, you know, if we were willing to, and I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but if we're willing to sell a namesake as something that we dedicate to a large donor, perhaps that's something that could help fund this as well.
I think, yes, the answer is, if there are community members that are interested in contributing, donating, certainly Dr. Byrne listed that as one of the funding options that's available. What we would do is set up a similar process and structure of that group organized, working towards understanding the topics, just like we did with Friends of the Stadium a number of years ago.
I think it's important though to understand that these are like, would it be community-based? It's not, it's not the staff that would do it.
We can't do that, right.
But the community, if someone wants to come forward and start that up.
Oh, okay, I realized that, so the staff can't facilitate, it has to be community, I see.
We help advise and provide information, but as far as the decisions that group is making or the fundraising efforts or manner in which they're going about raising those funds and all of those decisions, that's really the work of the community group that would want to come together.
So intent there.
So, if such a group.
Think bold, I don't know.
If such a group wants to form or come together, we would certainly be able to provide information and advisement for that group.
Thank you.
Yep. So I think we've got really good direction.
Yes.
Excellent.
For the next meeting. Team, thank you again for.
Thank you, thank you, DLA.
Thank you. Great job, thank you, and audience.
I have to get back to my job here, let's see. So, in addition to a future discussion, more further discussions on this topic, for the next board meeting, we also have our special public comment that I mentioned during my report on the IASB resolutions. We'll take action on the Barrington High School course offerings. We'll have a full-day kindergarten update, as well as a Framework 220 update, enrollment stat, 30-day enrollment status, and update on school improvement, that's a lot.
Well, and there's one more, if we're going to come back together to talk about finding performing arts, that would be another, an additional discussion.
I guess I would be, I would be open to if there's other things that don't have to happen on the 17th.
All right.
Just there's a lot here.
Let me work with our team and see if any of those items, we've already started working on them, but if there's a timing that maybe one or two of those can push or be delayed, I'll work with the team to discuss that.
I would say if we are going to ask the community to get involved, that means, board, we've got some work to do. We'd have to give them parameters, decide the group and things like that, so maybe we could send out, I don't know if you can do it this week, but send out what that has looked like in the past, do we? I feel like we've talked about this already. No, no. So what's, maybe you and I can talk about that, but it's a lot of work on our part, right? If we're going to have a community group formed. So I'd want to make sure that we do keep that on our, as a discussion item for the 17th, because
Absolutely.
we need the lead time. If that's what we, should we decide to do that?
Yep, absolutely. Okay, let me work with the team and we'll sort through that. Erin just reminded me, I forgot to mention this, during the committee reports, there was conversation at District Equity Team about this book and a potential book study. We handed out a couple copies to the board members, you and Leah that were there last time. We had a couple more, so we picked the two board members that are up next in the rotation to be at District Equity Team to give us a little time to get a couple more copies and we'll have this for the full board.
Okay.
Would this be like a community study or just for the team or how?
So it's been studied in the community before.
It's a book club, I think, from the library.
Yep, and then our staff participated, it was one of the presentations in our summer university that we offered. We actually had Dr. Brackett come and participate in that, as well as our staff that signed up for that course. So we thought it would be valuable for the board to also have that information. And then I'll stop there, then maybe that's a discussion item as to how does the board want to engage with the book. But I just wanted to make sure we started to get copies out to the board.
That's great.
You can also look on the website, is what I remember we talked about, that, I don't remember the name of the website, but maybe you can put it in your update, because if you don't, aren't going to read the whole book right away, you could like.
Oh, there's an app.
Do an app or something, yeah, there was a shortcut.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Board, we suspended closed because we had a few more things that we wanted to talk about. Do we still have an interest in going back into closed, given the time, it's 10:27?
I think we have questions that we have to answer.
Okay.
I don't think it's a long one.
Yeah.
I don't think it's long, so. I don't think it's long. So the board will return to closed, I don't think we have to have a motion to go back into closed, just double-checking, because we know we're updating ourselves on the rules and regulations. So we will return to closed session, we do not anticipate coming back into open to have any further discussion or actions. So feel free to depart, and we'll check when we're done with our close, but thank you for your participation and your enthusiasm.
And carry that enthusiasm on, you got to talk to your friends and your friends and